I'd like to call the February 6, 2020 Des Moines City Council's study session to order. And for the pledges, uh, the pledge of allegiance, will Councilmember Martinelli please lead us in the pledge?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the record show that all council members are present. Because we have some very important work to do tonight, I'm going to move the comments from the public until after we've had a chance to interview applicants for the vacant council position. We'll still give folks, uh, folks a chance to let their voices be heard, but it's not going to be until after the interviews. So with that, I would like to introduce a PowerPoint that will walk us through tonight's process. So from about now until 7:15, we will cover, you know, the, the process. And again, um, people like to know what's coming and I like to be transparent and this is the walk. The applicant opening statement, this, let me, let me say before I go too far. I wasn't able to box and create this kind of timeline at the time the agenda was published. And the agenda was published and it is published on Fridays. We didn't know how many applicants we'd have until Monday. As of Friday, we had one applicant. So if you had one applicant, it would make sense that you would engage and, and you might be able to complete this work in, in one night. As you can see, uh, when we get to the applicant's opening statements, just getting people to the podium to make their statement and back is likely to take 30 minutes. Then we go into council member questions. And if you have six council members asking questions, and we do, every one council member, you know, every, we ask a question and every, every candidate has the opportunity to respond. Well, simple math says it's about 20 minutes a question. We do want to see if we can get some comments in from the public. And anyway, that, uh, depending upon, this is a, this is a loose time parameter, but it's the best that we could come up with, given the math.
Mayor, point of privilege?
Sure. Um, the chair recognizes Deputy Mayor.
I, uh, I was looking at this and, uh, you know, you look at it by the time we get to comments of public. You're talking to the wee hours of night, deliberations, et cetera. I noticed in the agenda, the word is said that we, with the, uh, the, it's basically the final selection of a candidate to fill the vacant seat can occur on February 6. Basically, I don't think we need to put ourselves down to that. I think maybe we make a hard stop at like 10:30, but there's no reason we, we can't continue this to the following Thursday. I want to be able to, I think tonight, if we could get the statements done as well as, um, answer the questions and maybe some public comment. And then whoever signed up on the sheet, possibly they could, they could do that. And then we could go into, uh, whatever deliberations we need to and make our vote and decision. I don't know if we need a motion for that per se, so we might have to reference the city attorney, but.
I, I would just like to say that the count, the, the process is laid out. It's not, it's on the agenda as potentially one night, provided that the number of candidates made that make sense. With eight candidates, I don't think it's possible.
Yeah, so.
So what will happen is this is the process we will walk through. But once we, I mean, I don't know, the council could make motions to stay here till midnight, but I don't see that happen.
Yeah, well, in, in respect to our public, if they don't get a chance, we'd like, I think it's a good idea they get a chance, uh, following Thursday. So I think if we had that kind of agreement tonight before we started the meeting, I looked back at the, uh, 2003, 2013, uh, and 2015 meetings. The 2013 was the one that looked most comparable. It was, uh, we're eight candidates. They did it in that night. But I think with the, the fact that we want this to be a completely public process and allow our public to speak, I say we hold ourselves open to, uh, continuing on Thursday. I just want to call that out and make that clear.
The door is open. There's not a problem with that.
Okay.
Okay. So that's, that's the process. Here's a little bit, uh, more detail. Could I have the next slide, please? Can I have the next slide, please? Okay, so, and here's kind of the breakdown in a little bit more detail. In that, uh, opening statements will, the names will be drawn from, we want to do it from a hat, but we couldn't find a hat, so we have a bowl. We have a bowl. And they will be, the names will be pulled out at random. And when the name is pulled out to come up to give your opening statement, you will at that time become applicant one or applicant two or whatever in the order that they come out of the bowl. And as you can see, when it, the question shifts from each council member through, then we will also change the order to the applicants. At this point, um, let's see.
Mayor, point of privilege?
Yes.
I know you're anxious to, and so am I to get this all.
Sir, your microphone's not on.
Thank you. Um, uh, I don't know if this is the right moment, but, um, I would like the ultimate goal of this meeting to win all the candidates down to three finalists. And I'm prepared to make a motion to that effect. But, um, uh, going back to Councilmember Mahoney, um, his reference to, uh, 2003, that's the process that they followed at that time. And I've talked to several people involved and they all agreed it was, it seemed like a very fair and open, um, way to do things. So they had, it's just like what we've been doing, but that at the executive session, then, you know, there, there was an executive session and then there was a vote, um, to decide on three finalists who came back the following week. And then there was, uh, another interview, short interview process and then a final vote on, uh, who would be the winner. And that just seems like for such an important position, it seems like a reasonable course.
Well, where we're at right now is I'm laying out the process. And this is the process that we use.
I just want to, I just want to know where in this process I can make that motion. If it has to be now, I don't want to slow down the train, but if it needs to be now, I'll do it now. Otherwise, you know, hopefully someone will do me the courtesy of saying, you know, there's the point in the meeting to insert that.
If you want to make the motion now, make the motion.
Cool. Never done this before. I move that the council appointment process for the current vacancy be modified in the following manner. Immediately following tonight's interviews, the council will retire to executive session for up to 60 minutes, where a vote for discussion, after that, a vote will be taken to create a list of three finalists. The three finalists will be informed of the council's decision the day following the meeting, that would be tomorrow. After being informed of the council's decision, the finalists will be invited to provide supplemental materials. You don't have to, but, um, the, the agenda of the 13th February city council meeting will contain an item consisting of a second round of finalist interviews. So there'll be three interviews. Immediately following those interviews, the council may or may not decide to retire to an executive session for up to 60 minutes to discuss. And upon returning from an executive session, the council will immediately vote for the winning applicant who will be sworn in at the following meeting. That's it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Deputy Mayor Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think this is a, it needs to be a transparent process. I think that it is, it's open to six individuals or eight if two more seem to show. I think that's enough time, uh, is one interview. I don't believe in whittling it down. I think, uh, we're all going to be asking questions. We're going to hear the public comment. It wasn't part of our initial notification, nor was it the process in 2013 or 2015. And quite frankly, um, extending this period, extending this, and I think it could possibly go, with per his motion, it could possibly go into, into another meeting subsequent to the February 13th meeting. And the truth is, is we need council assignments, um, we need those council appointments, and we need to get moving on the city's business. Um, so I'm not in favor of that suggestion, uh, is what, what I would say.
Any other comments? Um, I, I believe I'm recognizing, did, did you, you have Councilmember Buxton?
So I'm in a meta, I'm amenable to four or five. I think at this point, three is a little bit small. So if you would, uh, what would that be called, a friendly amendment? Uh, if, if you're amenable to that, Councilmember Harris. Though if we don't get two more, five, six, it's pretty close. So I, I would be amenable to five out of eight.
Can I, I'm going to make a point before we go forward, if I could.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what you're intending by going to retire into executive session to whittle the list down. The truth of the matter is, I'd like this public, this process to be as public as possible. By having all the candidates out here and the, or the applicants and them telling their, their angle, providing their angle and answering questions in the public, um, I don't think there is a need necessarily to whittle it down. I will make a note I have here. We all have a council, we all have a packet. This is what every candidate provided us. We've read through it. We've done our homework. We're going to ask questions. We're going to give every candidate the same opportunity to present themselves. Going into exec, I, you know, we don't even have to use executive session here. And it would be, and, and it would be, you know, fine to do everything right here from the dais. I think, I mean, I, I have to say, I, and then asking the candidates to provide supplemental information. The candidates were given the application, the opportunity to provide a resume, provide ever, whatever they want. I'm saying that you're, this is dragging a process forward. If you look at February 13th, if we go to February 13th, and I think it's likely that we will, we're going to have to start that evening at 6:00 PM because we have city business that has to be done on that day. This is, and to Deputy Mayor Mahoney's point, pushing committees and everything off is, will inhibit the city's ability to, to function. This process is, as I've seen it, is not laid out, is not as transparent as just dealing with it right here, letting all the candidates speak and be heard and let the deliberation or whatever it is be heard here. I am not in favor of this. And so, but I also think that you need to know that going into executive session to decide, determine what your three item, who your three people are, is a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. Because there is no voting in executive session.
No, that's why I said that, you know, the vote would be taken here. But I'm just, the executive session was just from your agenda. You know, it, I am perfectly, uh, amenable to doing everything from the dais. That, that would be fantastic, in my opinion. You know, I was just trying to not interrupt the flow that you had outlined here. But, uh, if you want to have the discussion all out here, that's even better, in my opinion. I will just say that, you know, close by saying that, um, I've hired a lot of people over the years and I've never hired somebody for more than minimum wage on this kind of process, okay? With one question and all in one night or with, with only one round of interviews. And, um, and that's what I'm trying to get to. And I think this is just common sense that anyone would do. The city manager describes this as a corporation and I think what I'm proposing is what any corporation would do with any position that was of this particular importance. And I think that one, delaying things by one meeting is not too big a price to pay for, uh, just having that due diligence. Yeah, I'm done.
I've hired hundreds of people myself and I agree, you know, that usually in a, in a business, you're going to do a couple of interviews, but it's different with a public. It has to be out in the open. Everyone should earn, get no more or no less time. It should be the same. It should be that fair decision based on that and no less. And so I, that's why I'm, I'm against the motion because I think that this is adequate. It's fair. No one gets an additional time or exposure or anything along those lines. It, it, and it is, it's really, whether it's run, it's, it's sort of like a corporation, but it's not. It's public. And everything has to be here, out here, and the way we kind of laid it out. Just, just make it that simple.
Councilmember Martinelli?
I agree that I don't think we should do any part of this in executive session, but I do support the motion to whittle the number down a little bit. I would have to disagree that this is a fair and open process. The public, as well as the council, has had just a couple of days to look over eight applicants. They're given three minutes to give a presentation on why they should be put into this role, which is incredibly important. I think that the public deserves more time. I think that we can whittle it down without going into executive session. And I think doing so, whether it's three or four, would give the public even just an extra week to then monitor, look over, not monitor, but look through and look over those candidates and, and see which one they, they agree on. I think that the process as it is now, to be frank, is ridiculous. I think that three minutes, one question, a couple of days to fill a council position, um, is just absurd. And so I think this motion doesn't fix it, but it helps it. And so that's why I support it.
As a point of what you stated, though, it's six, there's going to be six questions and I, we don't know what they are. Any council member can ask what they want. But the other thing is, this is an appointment. It's not an election. This is, this resides with the body here. Now, I mean that, I mean, no disrespect to anybody here, but I have been on boards and councils and this is my fourth time through the process. I've seen process, this process in one flavor or another, pretty much like this, go on many times. I have also been part of an executive hiring staff. And to be honest with you, when you get down to the final part where you're in front of the board of directors, this is very much, in a public entity, this is very much what I have seen. So given that, I mean, I just want to be clear. You know, you don't get to poll social media and decide how you're going to vote. You can. I can't stop you from that, but this is your vote.
Yes, I agree, but we are here to represent the public.
We are here to represent the public.
We need to do our best to make sure that we have fully vetted these individuals. Three-minute presentation, I think, is shameful. I think they deserve a lot more to be able to give their case for why they deserve to be on this council. You're right, it's not an election, but that makes it even more important. Because in an election, the people decide, so we are supposed to represent the people and what they want. And we should be, we should give ourselves more time than a couple of days to hear from them and to, and to see, and to see what they want.
Well, I'm sorry you didn't have enough time to do your homework.
I had plenty of time, but the public, I don't think.
I'm just going to leave it at that. We have a nomination. Uh, I mean, a motion on the table. All those in favor of the motion to amend the process, raise your right hand. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion goes down. I will continue. Next slide, please. So from the public information side of this, we will have public comment following a question and answer period. And that will allow the public to provide input after all applicants have been heard. The comment will follow in the order of sign up, and we have the sign up sheets over there. Those who are wishing to speak must sign up. All public comment must be respectful of all applicant, applicants. We, we will not tolerate slanderous comments. I will say, these people are candidates. They are asking for an opportunity. They are still protected by slander laws. The process was modeled after prior council vacancies and is consistent with what we have done. The appointment is per the RCW noted and it is based on the council's vote of the most qualified person available until an election, until an election is held. This is not an election. So, and if this council fails to do something in the prescribed period of time, the decision goes to another body and we will be told who will be our next appointee. But again, I want to emphasize, this is a temporary appointment until the next vote by the citizens and the next election will be the city council in, um, 2021. Now I want to go into what we will not do. Next slide, please. We will not respond or be directed by any social media or email pressure. We will not answer to any threats or misrepresentations of this process. And I'm bringing this up because I will show you an example of what we have received. Adjusting any portion out of this will be a consensus of the whole. We just had the discussion. Any consideration to this process prior to this meeting would have required council members to reach out and get support of their fellow members. Leveraging consensus from media, et cetera, is not acceptable to this process. Next slide, please. This is what we will not respond to. We all received this email warning. I don't believe that this is how the citizens of Des Moines wants, want us to make decisions. As a matter of fact, Councilmember Nutting, please, uh, you had some information to share.
So per RCW 9A.76.180, intimidating a public servant. A person is guilty of intimidating a public servant if by use of threat, he or she attempts to influence a public servant's vote, opinion, decision, or other official action. So threats are defined per RCW, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but per RCW 9A.04.110. So these are statutes of the law. It impedes the process by intimidating any elected official and is a Class B felony punishable by law. So it impedes our decision up here to be threatened and put under the gun for anything. And jail time.
The other thing I'd like to add on to this is the way this is written. Every member who votes in favor of appointing to the vacant position a person who just lost an election. That's an interesting phrase there. It tends to call out one, maybe two people. The one that could be called out makes this very much appear as if it's a racially motivated person because the person that exists here is both a woman and a woman of color. Now I'm also going to, and I personally won't stand for it, but I'm also going to point out, just lost an election. Well, we have two people who have applied for this that have lost elections with this city. Does that mean the other one isn't, shouldn't be considered either? People that get to apply for this position, it gets to do so as is described in the RCW. It has nothing else to do with anything. I think the last point that I'm going to make is that I realize some of these processes, you know, are, are challenging to get your head around. And I want to be clear, I did receive an email from Mr. Harris and I did receive one from Mr. Martinelli. Asking, Mr. Harris asked me for an extension, to consider an extension. Mr. Martinelli said very much what he said up here, but he sent it to me on Sunday afternoon and released a statement to the blog the same day, so I didn't even have the chance to respond. With only the few candidates that we had on Friday, there was no way to deter, to be able to determine how big and how much time this was going to take. But going to social media is not the way, right way to govern. On social media, people hide behind various names and identities. They have multiples. They not, they may not even live in the city that we're talking about. But some feel that that's the place to do it. Well, I'm going to say, this isn't acceptable and this will not affect my decision-making. And it won't be tolerated either. With that, I am going to take us, I believe that's the last slide in the deck. Okay, so I'm going to take that into the interview of candidates for the vacant council seat, number three. I apologize for the tone being a little dark there, folks. I think it's important that people know what this council is dealing with. Okay, so at this time, call out the first one.
First off is David Lee Black or Penny Bohm in the room? David, please come up and have a seat at the front. Is Penny here? We're going to.
So that, I'm sorry, the first name is?
Well, we have to pull them out for the number. So we're going to pull their name, so we're going to pull the name out of this beautiful blue bowl.
Oh, you're asking who's here to put them in the bowl? I'm sorry.
Yes, we were missing two. Uh, now we're missing just one. So we're taking Penny's name out. She's not here. So Tara, would come over here. And so here they all are. Mix them up. This is like.
No, it's, we have to respect the random process. I need to say that with my mic on. Uh, green light goes to yellow, goes to red. And then, um, at that point, I'll just ask you to wrap, wrap up your thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Hello, um, my name's David Lee Black, as they said. I've lived here in Des Moines for all my life. Well, not all my life. I did join the, the Army and Air Force, uh, so I did spend some time overseas. And I am, um, concerned not only with the state of our country, our community. but also kind of where we're headed demographically. The Bay Boomers are retiring en masse, and that's going to be a huge demographic shift. And it's going to leave a lot of responsibility to my generation to care for an aging population and also a younger population. And it's going to be a tremendous strain, and it's going to require skill sets like I developed in the military of doing less with more, or doing more with less, excuse me. Yeah. That's government as is, right? But, so, yes, I don't have probably the strongest resume. I probably didn't go to the best schools. But I have been in extraordinary situations, and I have come through, and I've always served my community, and I've always put my community first and foremost. And I will always serve as a good voice for the community and be a reflection of that community voice for everyone. So, I think really what makes me the most qualified is that I'm just one of you guys, and I'll listen to you deeply, right? I'll understand what your problems are, and I'll connect with you and do your work to make sure that Des Moines continues to thrive. Because this is, Des Moines, you guys do a good job, by the way. Right, compared to some of the other, like, federal way, right? No. I think, I think some of the other communities out here are suffering a lot more than Des Moines, and I'd like to keep up the good work and continue to improve, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go through all the opening statements before we go to questions.
Mayor, Louisa Banks is next.
Okay, Louisa Banks.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Council, and community members. I want to thank you for this opportunity to apply for the vacant council position that was recently, oh, sorry, recently vacated by our Deputy Mayor Pennington because of his need to resign. The resume I submitted lists my accomplishments over the many years as a senior manager, formulating and implementing major budgets, capital, projects, and leading staff. It also lists my five years of accomplishments while I was on city council. However, it doesn't speak to the passion that I have for the future of our city, a passion and excitement to contribute towards the future. First, I'd like to take a moment to extend special thanks to those that are here supporting me. Thank you all. I believe in the goals and vision of our city council, of which I was privileged to be a part of over the last five years. I would be honored to continue being involved in moving these goals forward. My passions include, but are not limited to, keeping our community safe by utilizing and refining the policies that enhance safety and quality of life, continuing to focus and partner on economic development and growth throughout our city, our entire city, especially in our downtown Marina District, work with fellow council members, our city manager, our legislators on the mitigation of the environmental impacts of increased aircraft traffic. These actions will enhance the overall general well-being of our city, maintain the public and natural resources our residents love and deserve, as that provides quality family activities, attracts new residents, and increases tourism, which ties into our economic growth, tackle the issues of homelessness on a local and regional level, continue to work out the issues on our external communications, continue to represent all of our citizens, no matter where they live. However, first and foremost, keep our budget healthy, or none of the policies, or the choices that we make, or the day-to-day services or projects could be realized. I also appreciate and respect the relationship the council has developed with our city manager, the city staff, because they implement the council policies and directives, as this type of relationship supports the achievement of our goals and demonstrates to invested, to interested investors that we are a cohesive and functional city. Des Moines, like all cities, is faced with unique challenges, but council support and working collaboratively with our city manager and very competent city departments and continuing to engage with our citizens allows us to get through those challenges. I am knowledgeable in how our council and city works. If appointed, I intend to bring my best to council and will work with each and every one of you in an open, honest, and collaborative way for the success of our city. In closing, relationship building through respect and honesty are very important to me and those who work here. I believe our role as council members is to come together to serve the general good and make sure we make a positive, positive difference.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, fellow neighbors. My name is Mailing Sproger, and I am excited to be here and to be considered a co-council, uh, council, uh, what's the word? Your next city council member and collaborator. It's an opportunity that I might not have gotten. I was born in Maoming City, China, and at the time, China had its One Policy Act, which pressured parents expecting a second child or a daughter, like me, to consider adoption. And therefore, I went through the adoption system. I was in foster care for my first year until I was matched with my loving, wonderful parents, who, my mom is in the audience, who lived in Woodmont, Des Moines, and I've been a proud citizen ever since. Growing up in Des Moines, I was blessed with a safe nurturing environment that makes us proud to live here and build this community up. I was surrounded by mentors, such as former city council member Gene Goddard and other committed public servants. I was encouraged to explore my interests, and this led me to my passion in youth and government hosted by the YMCA. This is where I learned how to read and write legislation, debate, and compromise on policy. As I wrote on my application, I was also a part of the Police Explorer program, and this taught me firsthand how our law enforcement and our police interact with the community. I've been involved in a number of charitable, faith, and civic groups that are committed to making our community the best possible community and support. In 2017, I began working and advising in local, nonpartisan politics, gaining through the experience a deep understanding of issues, including homelessness, transportation infrastructure, and engaging youth in how to create a better society. I also worked for Tacoma's Environmental Services Department, learning about public utilities and the benefits of systems like green stormwater infrastructure. The experiences all worked together to ultimately teach me what it truly means to be a public servant, to actively support one's community and proactively participate in helping future generations. Thanks to all of this, I believe I can bring informed perspective to the city council. Additionally, I can bring a unique voice to inspire the next generation and engage the public that's coming in very diverse. I was inspired by public service, by local leaders who work hard, just like each one of you, to make a difference in our constituency, in the constituency. And I'm passionate about instilling the empowerment that governments and being a part of it can instill in our youth. Thank you for spending your time listening to me, and I hope I get the chance to work with each one of you on making Des Moines a better place to call home.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, my name is Senator Malakay, and I'm happy to be here, but I'm also missing my family. It is my birthday, so we are spending the time here. So, I think it's important for my kids to understand that whatever you do for the public, you're going to have to do no matter what time of year it is. Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers, for taking the time to hear all our candidates to replace Chief Pennington. Over the last nineteen years, I've had the opportunity to be a public servant with the city of Seattle. During that time, I've learned to grow and develop in the fields of recreation, finance, technology, construction and facilities management, and project management. This has ranged from managing a 1.3 million recreation scholarships for the families that needed financial assistance for programming and childcare, to working with different trades on maintaining Seattle Parks and Recreation Facilities, to also programming and project management of our access and security controls for public safety of the city of Seattle. Because of my knowledge, experience, and networking in each of these professional fields of public service, I've become extremely versatile. I believe that these same skills will be an asset in serving this council. As a husband and a father of a six- and four-year-old, I want to serve on the Des Moines Council to help ensure that my children and all the children of this community will be able to find connection and community where they live, learn, and play. Building a community is paramount to making a city thrive. I believe that I would be able to build relationships across the city and to continue to foster connections and help us achieve our goals as a city. As a person of color, I feel that it is important to have a voice for the vulnerable communities. I'll be a champion of race and social justice and equity throughout the city and have, I have years, I have many years and experience in this arena and the RSJI for the city of Seattle. I will work hard to revitalize our business districts and sustain the locally owned businesses that have served our families. Over the last nineteen years, I've learned how government works. We must continue to ensure services to all, from youth to seniors. As a council member, I would work to ensure the safety and security of the residents, to promote economic development and fiscal accountability. You could, you can count on me to be accessible, effective, and committed to the future of our city. It would be an honor to serve on the city council, and I respectfully ask for your vote.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I understand the enthusiasm in the room, but because I want every candidate to feel comfortable, we need to refrain from claps. Because if some get more claps than others, it's just a problem, so. Anyway, I realize everybody's excitement. I don't want to spoil the fun, but please understand, this is why.
I'm sure you say it now, but...
You know what? I'll tell you what.
I understand.
No, I'll cut you, I'll tell you what. At this point, we'll carry the claps through the introduction, but when we get into the questions, we got to stop. Fair enough? Okay. Okay.
Councilmembers, citizens of Des Moines, my name is Harry Steinmetz. I've lived here in Twin Moines for about twenty years. We moved here because it was halfway between Olympia, where I was working, and halfway between Queen Anne, where my wife was working. Now, that halfway is not distance, it's time. The commutes were about the same, and the commutes have just gotten worse. But we moved here because it was a safe, charming city. We raised two boys here. We've, I've coached them in parks and rec, basketball, and in Little League. I've been married to Kristin Steinmetz, my wife, for twenty-five years. We enjoy this city. And, boy, when we moved here, you know, it was a great little place with a lot of potential. And it still is a great little place with a lot of potential. My background, I'm an attorney. I do primarily criminal defense work. I've also been staff counsel for the Senate Judiciary Committee. I've been an investigator for the Judicial Conduct Commission. I've been a prosecutor, both a municipal prosecutor and a county prosecutor. And I've been Director of Government Relations for a not-for-profit long-term care and senior housing providers like Wesley and Johnson and represented them with DSH, in front of DSHS in the regulatory process, and also in front of the state legislature. This has given me a critical eye of how legislation is made. I understand how to write it. I understand legislative procedure. I understand how to accomplish a desired goal, and I know how to disagree and remain friends. I do that dealing with prosecutors almost every day. At this time, I believe that the people of Des Moines are looking for new ideas on the council. They are looking to see some kind of change. And I believe that they're not looking for conflict, but I'm the person, I think, that can present themselves as the person who can sort of bridge that gap. Many of you know me, I ran four years ago against Tracy. I've actually made a friend out of that campaign, you know? And I consider that one of the greatest accomplishments of the campaign. It was a forward-looking campaign. It was a campaign about how to make Des Moines better, and the voters made their choice, and that's just fine. But I'm back, and I'd like another chance. And so, this is why we have that opportunity. Again, we're back to this theme, though, of potential, you know? And I think that one of the most critical things that the council can do now is try to communicate and let the people of Des Moines know that there are some changes being made. I know that there are a lot of plans. I've been hanging out at council meetings now for, boy, probably five, six years. Is that it?
Oh, you get to wrap up.
Okay. The point is, I believe we have a great town. Deputy Mayor Mahoney told us in 1962 about an article that said they were worried about the second runway, and they were worried about downtown redevelopment, and we're still there, we're still fighting the same battles, but we can make a difference and get that done. And that's what I, why I want to be on the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening, my name's Tad Doviak. One of my family members once told me that if you ever want half the people in town to hate you, run for office. So, I hope less than half of you hate me at this point. I want to thank all of the applicants for applying. I am excited to see this great group of people step up to come and serve our city. I am really glad I'm not the only one who came to do this. To see such a great quality and diversity of applicants speaks well for our city. I'm here because I like to help people. I got a degree in social work way back when, when I was in a bachelor's degree, because I like to help people. I continue, I've continued that. I retired from social work, but I now, I'm in IT, and I help people who are really good at their jobs keep their computers working so they can do great things at their job. Here in the community, from running Facebook groups in the community to coaching my kids in soccer and baseball, I'm a recently minted soccer referee, so I'm looking forward to serving on the council where less people yell at me than do at the soccer games. And every decision seems like a bad decision when I'm on the sidelines there. I'm here because I like to help people, and that's what I love to do. Public safety and increased aircraft traffic are two areas where people in this community really feel powerless. They, sorry to bring up social media after the mayor poo-pooed it a little bit, but my, people in the community are really upset about mail theft, car prowls, and those darn airplanes going over heads at two o'clock in the morning. Public safety, we can do a little bit about. We can do public education. The Police Department has some great software that they're using if people would just report the crimes that are happening in their community, and that can increase the safety in our community. And then with the airport, we just have to keep working with the port and with the other communities in our area to do what we can to make things better for us. Then, economic growth and development is something that we, on the council, can definitely have an impact with. Last year, I brought a sign issue to the council saying, hey, let's kind of homogenize the signs, give businesses a break on... the signs, give businesses a break on waiving the permit fees for those, and make our community look a little more tied together instead of the mishmash of signage that we have now. Right now, I just want to wish the council members that are up there, who have all of us staring at them tonight, the best as you listen to us, you listen to our comments, our answers to your questions, and I pray that you guys are granted an extra dose of wisdom as you make a choice for who is the best fit for the city at this time. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Lucky seven. Thank you. Thank you to the council, Mayor, staff here, and especially you, the citizens of Des Moines. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Dan Harrington. I'm a twenty-one-year resident of North Hill, and have lived in the same house since, my very first house since we moved here, with my wife of twenty-five years, Tricia, and my two young kids, twelve and ten-year-old Ryan and Rachel. With my children, I volunteered a lot of things here in the Des Moines area. I've volunteered as a baseball executive for the South Highland National Little League, volunteered at North Hill Elementary, been a high school golf coach for eleven years, and done a lot of real general things around the community that I don't want or need any recognition for. So, the reason I'm here tonight is that I feel like I'm qualified to fill this vacancy because of my extensive experiences working with both for-profit entities as well as nonprofit organizations. For over two decades, I have supervised personnel at private, semi-private, and park district-oriented recreation facilities. My career experiences include working with various types of owners, stakeholders, and voters to transform and make things better for operations as well as for individuals that I've worked with. I feel that I would be a tremendous asset to Des Moines because I would have this skillset to bring us all together kind of collectively and communicate better as well. We seem to have a communication breakdown a little bit in this town, and I want to make sure that we can be all cohesive again in that area. So why do I want to be on the council? Well, I have the three Ps: parks, police, and people. Parks, my career background has been in the parks and recreation field, and as a leader of one of the largest national recreation organizations in the country, the Professional Golf Association of America, I am very aware how important parks, recreation, and the transformation of green space is in our community. Related to the police, I've lived here twenty-one years, and I'm very pleased with our police officers, our first responders. Those are things that we always often take for granted in our city, and I think that we need to also understand that we have an outstanding foundation in those two areas right now already. We have definite efforts from this council, from this city body, that have made good strides to move forward with our efforts in the town. As a council member, I would challenge us, as a leadership group, to become more engaged in reaching out to community volunteer groups, to encourage enhanced neighborhood watch policies, and to interact with residences and businesses of our area. Finally, people. You know, we have a good job of building roads and highways within our neighborhoods that ensure safe travel, invites visitors from outside the city to come to our area. We need to show it. We need to publicize where our TBD $40 a car goes to, right? I'd like to see a lot more transparency in that. I'd like to see some more outreach and communications. Let's give the voters something in that area, enhance communications. Finally, in conclusion, I'd like to support programs that efficiently transition people from financial hardship to skillsets. I read an article the other day that in four years, we're going to be short 400,000 welders in the United States. Why doesn't Des Moines become the home of teaching trades to people that need it, and we could be nationally recognized for that? And that would be one of my goals as a council member. Thank you for considering me for this position, and I look forward to your vote, council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, this brings us to the non-clapping portion of the interview process, and that's just out of fairness. Can we get that? The one slide that shows the... So I believe that's next one? There you go. There you go. And so, the way we will work this is, I hope I've got my list correct, the first one is the, there's only seven people answering. And so, the one thing that I will ask the council is, there are seven candidates, and there are, there are seven candidates and six council members. So that means one candidate will not have the opportunity to go first. So, given that we are down a candidate to keep things, the playing field even, my thought is, let's come up with a seventh question, and I will put Deputy Mayor Mahoney on the hot seat and say, why don't we start with you and close with you?
All right, Mayor.
Does that work?
Yeah, sure. Thank you for that, by the way. All right. Who's first? Okay. David, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, I ask the question, and then each of them will come up and answer. That's correct, Mayor?
Yes.
That's correct.
All right. Here's my first question.
Yes.
Please define the role of the Des Moines City Council and your role as an individual council member.
Well, the council is legislative body, right? That oversees, just like any part of our legislative branch of government, it writes laws and oversees budgets, assigns budgets, stuff like that. I know you guys even sign off on payroll and stuff like that, and various expenditures and stuff like that, so. And I think more than that, it's customer service position. You know, I saw Tracy out here shaking everyone's hand. That's, I mean, that's a good job. We should be interfacing with the public and listening to what they have to say. So I think there's implicit, you know, what the law says you have to do, but there's also an unspoken implicit job here, and that's taking care of the people of Des Moines and putting their needs ahead of your own, so. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Out of practice, you may want to repeat the question, just to be clear and fair.
I will repeat the question. Please define the role of the Des Moines City Council and your role as an individual council member.
The City Council is primarily, and I guess, as was said, is legislative. However, it's also policy-driven. We make policy here in the city, as well as making certain that the directives of those policies are carried out by the city manager. The decisions around budget are the council's, the decision around capital improvement projects are the council. And as individuals, it's important for us to realize that there's a succinct line between administrative functions and council functions. We are here as a council to make sure that the city manager and the city is successful. And how to make that successful is to make sure that Day-to-Day stays with the city manager, and that all else, as far as the raising taxes, making sure communications around those taxes are noted, is the council, along with staff. And I think the most important thing that we need to understand as individuals, we have a responsibility as council people to make sure you're respectful towards each other as well as the citizens. It's tough when it comes to communication, because, as we all know, everybody doesn't get on Facebook, everybody doesn't get on the computer, everybody doesn't watch Channel 21, and we can't mail out to 32,000 people what it is the council does. So primarily, there's a responsibility for all citizens, but as well as the council, to make sure information is transparent and as transparent as possible, unless, of course, it's under an RCW that says that we just can't talk about it. So that would be my answer for you.
Thank you. Hi. All right. Please define the role of the Des Moines City Council and your role as an individual council member.
All right. Copy paste, guys. That was a wonderful answer. The role as a city council member and as the city council is definitely policy-driven. It is to create policy that makes sure that the city runs smoothly. It is the job of a city council member to work with our city manager in that the staff that does the research provides the education that the council delivers a really great proposal for. It's driven by studies, driven by research, and therefore is the job of the council to take in that information and to make sure that the citizens benefit from the best policy decision-making. It's also to oversee the budget, to make sure that not only is our budget financially solvent in the current fiscal year, but also twenty, thirty, forty years into the Des Moines's future. It is the job of the council not to be shortsighted in that way. It's also, as things are recommended, that they oversee capital improvements and making sure that we listen to the public when we have the best information also coming from the public, and not just the information that us as an individual decide that that's just how it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll repeat the question. Please define the role of the Des Moines City Council and your role as an individual council member.
I think, first and foremost, that the city council is a representation of the community that they serve, and with that, they should continuously engage with the communities and their priorities, and educate the community on how legislation, city governance, and boards and communities and organizations work. With that, as a city council member, you, I would like to say that it is the responsibility of the city council to be the fiscal and financial responsibility of the community, to also be the face of the community that they're representing, to understand that consensus is going to be the most important thing in this situation because of seven different personalities, including having a city manager to work with, that you end up having to find some form of way to agree on the most important parts, which in this situation for me would be dealing with the economics, dealing with the priorities of the community of safety, dealing with our youth and our seniors, and also how we are going to deal with the five, ten, and twenty-year plan, as some of us are in the middle of their lives, some of us are towards the end, how we're going to be able to support the broad spectrum of the community.
Thank you. Please define the role of the Des Moines City Council and your role as an individual council member.
Thank you. I think in the broadest sense, it's the role of the city council to set the long-term vision for what this community needs, what it wants to be, and to direct the city manager to implement that. And that's the big picture. The second thing that the council needs to do is be very aware of the financial status of the city, where the revenue is coming from, why, if we need more revenue, that's explained clearly to everybody in the audience, and then, thirdly, to make sure that that revenue is spent wisely and properly. I also think, as an individual, it's the role of the individual council member to be the conduit through which things get percolated up to the city. We're responsible to know the people in our community and to find out when there's an issue. That can be everything as little as, hey, Joe has a big pothole in front of his street, and maybe that needs a little reminder that that needs to be looked at or put on the agenda somewhere for public works. Now, the last thing I think that the city council needs to do is figure out how to work together, is to figure out that we're all in this together, and we have competing interests, and we have competing ideas, but there needs to be that sense, getting back to the long-term vision of where we're going. And that needs to include both my generation, the millennials, and Generation Y, because this town's going to be here in ten, fifteen, twenty-five years, even if some of us are not. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Please define the role of the Des Moines City Council and your role as an individual council member.
Very succinctly, I think the role of the city council is to lead in the community. There's the nuts and bolts of making laws, ordinances, overseeing the budget, setting policies and such, but being a leader within the community means not only listening to the citizens who have elected you, but also, you know, coalescing those decisions or that information down and making tough decisions at times. I think one of the toughest decisions you can make on the council is to raise taxes, and that's where very clear communication needs to happen with the people in the community, because I don't know anybody who likes their taxes raised. But sometimes, when you are looking at what the city needs, that becomes necessary. So, but you'd better know what you're doing when you bring that up, because then half the people are going to hate you. And then, as an individual, I believe that an individual council member is accountable to the voters. You serve the community by sitting on the committees that you're assigned. Through those committees, you are tasked with learning very specifically about what that committee is about, and then bringing that back to the council and helping to inform the other council members about that particular issue. You read a lot, a lot, and just, again, as an individual, be informed, be educated, and be a good conduit for the citizens to the other council members.
Thank you. All right. Last time I have to repeat myself. Please define the role of the Des Moines City Council and your role as an individual council member.
All right. The council obviously has the reviewing of the ins and outs of our money, going through that process and providing consent agendas, and considering budget adjustments as we go along through the year and through our budget cycle, sets policies, addresses issues, directs staff, and also considers, obviously, capital expenditures and things that are down the road in short-term and long-term areas. Individually, as a council member, you're a public representative. You're a positive contributor to the community. You follow the oath of responsibility to the city and to the taxpayers, if you're an individual council member. And finally, both of them, both council members and the council as a whole, we have to listen to the public. We consider public comment, and we engage and communicate. Those are the most important, probably, of all the things of all these that we've talked about before, or anybody else has talked about before, but engaging and communicating with the public, whether it's hard or easy, those are the things that we have to always engage with in this leadership body. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes my questions. Question?
Thank you all for coming out and for standing up and being willing to serve our community. I first want to apologize to the candidates that you were only given three minutes to present your case for feeling such an important role. I think it's important to note that the public, I just think it's important that the public knows that that's not a decision that the council made or even discussed.
Mr. Martinelli, I will caution you right now. Either you're going to answer, ask a question, or you're not.
Thank you, Mayor. My question, in the last election, yes?
First candidate needs to come up.
I haven't asked a question?
That'd be Louisa Banks.
The first applicant, number two, Louisa Banks.
You have to remind us. Sorry.
And I do have the same question for everybody. In the last election, two incumbents were replaced primarily because the public called for more transparency. With that in mind, my question is, can you make a promise to the public here today that if appointed, and this could be a simple yes or no, or you can expand if you'd like, that you will work to be as transparent as possible as an individual council member and that you will work to make our body as transparent as possible?
It could be a simple yes, but I would say that it wasn't just because the voters wanted transparency. They wanted a lot, and I would say that in that election process, that it was absolutely certain that people wanted to have more communication and transparency. It depends on what that means, because transparency, when it comes to executive session, is not, you absolutely cannot have that unless it's brought back to the dais because it's legally able to be brought back to the dais. So as far as being on the council and transparency, I think you all are transparent. You speak your minds. We've always spoken our minds, and as far as the public goes, they have spoken their minds, too. So committed to transparency, for some reason, that word's not sounding, you know, very friendly anymore. So transparency is our job. It's always been the council's job. We changed what happened seven, eight, 10, 20 years ago to be more transparent, to be more open. Now granted, there's some people who feel like we haven't, you may not be able to change their minds, don't know, but I would say that any one council, any one council member is open to any communication whatsoever. Council goes out all the time in terms of going to forums or community meetings. So I would say yes. I don't think it's a simple answer because it has to be categorized.
To alter my question slightly to give an example, at the last council meeting, a motion was introduced to have a budgetary issue of at least, it is the same.
Sir, you have to ask the same question.
That was not part of the agenda. The agenda said that you suggest we ask the same question, but it was not required. That's what the agenda stated.
You are biasing the outcome if you do not want to be consistent.
I'm clarifying the question based on the comment she made, because she asked for an example, so I'm giving an example.
She did, no, you either ask your question or don't.
So are we required to ask the same question?
Yes.
That is not what the agenda stated. That should not be a requirement.
Well, I'll tell you what. If you want to change up, I just want it to be known in public that not everybody answered the same question from you because frankly, you didn't ask the same question, and very few words in a sentence, as you know, can change the context of a question.
That's totally fine. I want the public to know that the agenda stated that we were not required to ask the same question of every candidate, and I don't think that should be the case. It is the same question.
The agenda did state that each council member can ask different questions, however it was recommended, that they ask the same question.
Exactly. Thank you, thank you, City Attorney. So in the last council meeting, a motion was put forward to have a budgetary issue of $200,000 with the city manager severance package. That was introduced and passed the same night. The public was given absolutely no input. That's what I mean in terms of transparency. That's the kind of thing that the public doesn't want anymore. So my question to you, the same question, is will you make a promise here to the public today that if you're appointed, you will work to be as transparent as possible, and not only that, but you will work to make this body as transparent as possible?
Yes. Y-E-S, yes. I not only would pledge to be transparent when legally allowed, of course, there are, as stated, instances where parts of the city council does go into executive session and blah, you know. But ultimately, there are so many ways that a council member can create a body that communicates well with the public. I'm a millennial, and I use social media. I know not all of you do, but I would be active on that in terms of letting the public know what has gone on in our meetings, along with a blog, weekly updates, as well as initiating communication and conversations with our businesses and residents that come approach me and want to know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. To repeat the question, can you make a promise to the public here today that if you're appointed, you will work to be as transparent as possible and you will work to make this body as transparent as possible?
So I'll answer that by saying yes. I would hope that that's the goal of every council person, to be able to do that. And along with that, I would like to add that transparency in a vote is very nuanced. The information that is provided to the council, either for that agenda or previously, I would hope that the council would have the time to reflect, and although not all decisions can be made with a lot of information, in this situation that I think you're referring to, I would have thought possibly that there would have been more time to discuss that as a 10 minutes at the end. I watched the video, and I know, working in a public agency myself, that what ends up happening is, although the decision may be correct, it looks like the process may be flawed, and that some people would want more information. And if you guys get to know me, I'm a Generation Xer, and I was in the dot-com boom when I was doing IT, and I have no social media accounts is because of my belief that I think for a lot of us, we should engage as much as we can in person. I still write letters to people back home. I still email people, and although my wife is the primary person for all our social media accounts, you know, if necessary, I don't have a problem communicating with social media, as that is also part of my generation. But to back again, I still think that transparency also happened in that, it just may not have happened the way I think it necessarily did for that moment in time.
Thank you. Same question. Can you make a promise to the public here today that if elected, you will work to be as transparent as possible and you will work to make this body as transparent as possible?
Absolutely, yes. I think that that has been a constant issue. It's why I got involved with the city council politics in the first place, back when the proposal was to build what was going to be called the Woodmont Recovery Center on the old Rosie's Diner Lot in the south end of town. All of a sudden, we discovered, everybody that lives down in the south end, that here was this huge complex going in that was drug treatment, mental health treatment, a locked facility, a 24-hour care facility, and a recovery cafe that was all going in in one place, I believe it's 600 feet away from the local elementary school, and it was a done deal. That's what we were told. I think that's a transparency issue. The neighborhood should have known about that. I think that last week, and no offense to anybody here, I think that bringing an amendment, a friendly amendment to the floor, that involves, I think it's about a $300,000 hit, that commits a future council to do that without anything is just bad procedure. I think that there should be a council rule that says, no, anything over a certain dollar amount needs to be an agenda item and looked at before. I also think that the process that we have of taking public comment on the same night as the vote on that particular issue creates a transparency issue, because you don't necessarily see, or you don't have a chance to get the full public comments to the council members. And so I'd like to see something that works so that we have the public hearing, and then a week later, we take the vote, something like that. I think all of those would help improve the transparency of the council a tremendous amount. Thank you.
Thank you. Same thing. Can you make a promise here tonight to the public that you will work to be as transparent as possible and that you will work to make this body as transparent as possible?
Yes, absolutely. Notwithstanding, you know, the as possible, of course, you know, there's things we can't talk about. Harry took my entire answer. Harry and I worked on the Woodmont, No Woodmont Rehab together. That's where we met. We, so we worked really hard. I think 636 feet is the exact distance. I did the maps for that proposal and everything. Yeah, let's tell the people what they need to know. Let's listen to questions. Let's engage with the public as much as possible without compromising the things that were required by law to not compromise, so.
Thank you. And finally, can you make a promise to the public here tonight that if you're appointed, you will work to be as transparent as possible and will work to make this body as transparent as possible?
Thank you. So I think it's funny that we're talking about generations here with the youngsters. I'm a flower child, and I'm pretty sure that my parents, the year I was born, were very transparent. So, yeah. Right now, this council up here, we have, that currently leads our city, has demonstrated a lot of transparency. They've tried very hard to make this better and better for us. I've seen it. I've seen it informally, I've seen it formally here, sitting in the audience, as well as watching on Channel 21, and I think that little improvement's to be made in the communication area, and that's about it. I think there is one hazard in transparency, and that is, in this day and age of social media, we are all kept up to that, and that turns into fact, and it is not always fact on social media, whether it's the national stage or the local stage. We need to make sure that we go back, I hate to say that I'm old now, but we need to go back to a little bit what we used to have when we used to get a newspaper in our driveway, and that is fact-checking and not always believing what you see on your social media. I use it a lot, but I always use it with a grain of salt, and I rarely also participate in social media. So for those of you that were wanting some replies the last couple of days, I didn't respond because I don't think it's the proper forum to do that. I think for us to be transparent as a leadership board here, we need to all have the ability to step above that, step above social media and all the media influences that we are now bombarded with on a daily basis here in our community. Thank you.
This takes us forward to, oh, I'm sorry. My mistake. No, no, no. Nope, it's number seven. We have the.
We need to have candidate, our applicant number one, please. Wrong, council member two. Yeah, you're right. Thank you.
The simple answer to your question is yes. In my experience, I served as an Army medic. If someone's arm is blown off, you don't have transparency in your response to that. You don't like, oh my God, you know, you have to remain cool and calm, so, yeah. Transparency with a little bit of prudence and good judgment.
Okay, we've been through every, so we're moving to Councilmember Netting. And Mayling, yep.
First off, thank you all for who have put in their applications for the appointee. Again, I was part of that process six years ago, so I applaud you for all getting up there. It's not, it's not easy, so, thank you, guys. My question tonight is, the Marina District contains both the Marina and Downtown Corridor. With that said, what is your understanding of the challenges with the key areas of redevelopment?
Thank you for your question. Developments downtown is something I very much support. It's important to the long-range plan, our long-range economic development plan and regional growth management strategy. So having the Marina at its best, having the dredging, construction, so that it brings in new business and becomes very appealing so that more traffic comes through Des Moines. One of the things I do as a council member is I look at creating a corridor that connects Highline Community College to downtown. There's a huge, in my viewpoint, potential for getting the youth drawn into our community and also bringing in more businesses that pertain to young people. While the businesses there are great, I grew up there, I've gone to different restaurant establishments and different businesses along there. One of the things that I do personally is also reach out to new partners and draw them in to our community in downtown. Yeah, that's pretty much it. I, yeah, that's a wonderful question. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Same question. The Marina District contains both the Marina and Downtown Corridor. With that said, what is your understanding of the challenges with the key areas of redevelopment?
So I'll split that up in two parts, even though they're both inside the business core. So personally, I envision the Marina as Des Moines' attraction. I mean, beside Redondo, we are known as the water city, and it seems like, as a person who just moved here five years ago, there's not a lot of emphasis on that. When we first came here to the community, we happened to have a chance to find the Marina and been able to enjoy it. There's not a lot of public engagement in there. By that, I mean, we need to activate the Marina with as many things as possible, both for the business and the public, so that we have the opportunity to enjoy something in this state that's very precious, which is, you know, accessible waterfront for a lot of people, especially with the community that we have, the community that lives here that is both low-income and non-low-income. It's rare to be able to just hop over to it with it. Now, with the business side of the downtown core, I'll be honest, it's very lacking. I think we need to find a way to bring the businesses that, I wouldn't try to compare this to Seattle, but something small like Beryan and a few of the other smaller cities, Kent and Olympia and Fredaway, where we have more that's going on downtown. I can tell you that I've walked down to the downtown core with our kids, and we've seen everything within a minute, and it feels like there's a lot lacking, and we need to find a way to bring in more than the few things. And unfortunately, the way sometimes business works, which happens with, I think it was previously brought up by the mayor, of QFC being gone, you end up losing the city when you don't have a central attraction, and you have, unfortunately, the Dollar Tree and now a few of these other, not to call out the Dollar Tree, I love the Dollar Tree, but that brings in the diverse community that we have. You know, the downtown core itself seems like it's geared to a certain group of people, and it feels like we need to push as much as we can to get different groups of people in there as soon as we can.
Thank you. All right. The Marina District contains both the Marina and Downtown Corridor. With that said, what is your understanding of the challenges with the key areas of redevelopment?
Well, I think that development of the Marina that's now being planned by the city is a good first step, and as I understand, the theory is that will pull some of the property values behind it to make it more attractive for people to come in and want to redevelop in the downtown core, and I think that's a pretty good strategy, but we have to get that done. I think some of the challenges to that, which is specifically to your question, is that we have, those are all privately owned properties, and we're very limited in what we can do with the landlords who own those. For example, the Dollar Tree lot is owned one side by one brother, one side by another brother, I believe, and they don't get along, and as a consequence, it becomes very difficult for a developer of any kind to come in and say, hey, I want to buy your lot, and Joe says he'll take this, will you take this? And no. And that's the end of the discussion, and that's extremely frustrating. I think that there are a couple of things that we can do to help move that along, and that is to try to get the property values up to the point where the landlords are willing to sell, but it still has to happen in a way that makes the developers want to come in and still do that, so it's always a balancing act, but to a degree, the city can affect that. I also think it's important for the city to act as, you know, sort of a cheerleader, sort of an outreach, almost salesmanship for the town, to get people in here and interested in our city, and I think that those are the challenges that the city council can address. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Marina District contains both Marina and Downtown Corridor. With that said, what is your understanding of the challenges with the key areas of redevelopment?
Well, we got two, two areas there, the Marina and the, and downtown, and we've got a lot of empty businesses in the downtown corridor. Like I brought up a little bit before, signage is not, it's all over the place. I don't think there's a cohesiveness to our downtown area. I think that doing little things like that, improving signage, the council can, you know, direct the city to, you know, hey, waive the, waive the, the permit fees to improve the signage, that'll help bring things a little, be more cohesive. I think, like Harry said, working with property owners can be problematic if the property owners don't want to work with you. There's only so much we can do. All we can do is try and set the agenda, set policies that make it more attractive for the property owners. One of the things that I think that we've missed as an opportunity here is, is the Pokemon Go phenomenon that was going on down at Marina. That brought a lot of work for the city, and with some expenditures for the city because of the amount of people there, garbage, that kind of thing. But I've, and I said this a lot to, to my neighbors and to other people in the city, that was a great opportunity. We have a bunch of people coming here. Let's put businesses there, food trucks, whatever, you know, develop the Marina area so that people, when they come here, they buy an ice cream cone for their kids, for themselves, pretzels, the quarter deck's there now. How much more business would they be doing if we had a Poki stop right there? I think that, again, looking at the big picture of, you know, what are the little things that are happening when, when the council makes decision or directs the city to do different things? You know, what are, what are some of the opportunities we might be missing?
Thank you. The Marina District contains both Marina and Downtown Corridor. With that said, what is your understanding of the challenges with the key areas of redevelopment?
Thanks, Jeremy. Starting out with the Marina, I'm going to be honest, I, I don't follow the Marina very much, and I haven't followed it closely, so I default to the downtown area, which I do much, much more, have much more knowledge about. I, I do have a couple of friends that are business owners down there in the downtown core. I honestly don't know the, the real answer to those sort of situations. From, from my living room window, which is up on a hill, I have a view of the Normandy Park Town Center, and for the past fourteen, fifteen years since that shopping center opened, they've rarely been above fifty percent occupancy at that shopping center, and they continue to lose their anchor stores in that shopping center. And I think some of the same things happen with our downtown core area, is losing either an anchor tenant, or perhaps having the inability to garnish a, a bigger national company or people with deep pockets to come in if the promise of having your purchasing power in that area being a little bit diluted with other small mom-and-pop businesses, I hate to say, but that might be a little bit of a difference of opinion on those sort of things. I would love to see our downtown core maybe perhaps transform if we're not able to do it in a, a financial way. As a Parks and Rec person, perhaps the, the possibility of converting some of the properties that have been vacant for long periods of time into some open space or green space areas that we can use by the community instead of, instead of having it as an empty storefront for years and years and years. Lastly, communication. I think communicating to the residents of the city, the importance of keeping us up to date on certain projects. I went online yesterday, preparing for tonight, and I'm not able to find anything recent about the landmark, what's going on with the landmark up on the hill, what's going on with the Des Moines Theater. I have not seen any traction on that for almost a year now, since they broke ground and got the new height changes to the, to the city, and so I think we're kind of being left a little in the dark on that. I'd like to see us be a little more transparent on that, and, and kind of not only toot our horn as far as the things we're doing well as a city, but also toot our horn on things that we're, we're challenged with, and we would need some help by the public to help get these projects moving along in the, in a forward progress. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, the Marina District contains both the Marina and Downtown Corridor. With that said, what is your understanding of the challenges with the key areas of redevelopment?
Well, before I answer that question, I'd like to first say that we've got some opportunities in the downtown Marina area, right? Like, waterfront is a premium, right? Like, it's, it's only you go up in, in property value, so that's one thing. And I think one of the things that the community is most upset about is the parking, right? The fine, like, having to pay for parking and stuff like that. I think one of the things we can do is kind of get out of the way and maybe start looking at zoning, right? If you look at, in Tacoma, Ruston Way, huge transformation, huge development, right? Because not only do they have, they have commercial spaces and residential spaces zoned, mixed, right, in the same building, right? So you have a storefront on top of apartment, right? And so, I think if we look at some of these lateral solutions, we could probably come up with some really interesting innovative ways to revitalize our downtown. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, the Marina District contains both the Marina and Downtown Corridor. With that said, what is your understanding of the challenges with the key areas of redevelopment?
Everybody basically said what we each were going to say, but I would say that the biggest problem I believe we have, first of all, we own the Marina, we own the beach park. So that is one good thing. We are able to make some huge changes there, and of course, we did have recently public comment for, I believe it was a, not quite a retreat, but it was a, an opportunity for the public to provide input on some of the ideas that could happen down at the Marina. So that was, that was excellent. In the core itself, though, we own no property. We don't own those buildings. And I think the challenge for us is that we get those business owners to the table in some form or fashion, and I know we've tried in the past, but that doesn't mean we don't continue. And then with that, there's a vision that occurs. So the vision that the city and the council has can at least be brought to the table with those owners, or, as I know the city manager and staff are doing, get investors in here. Get them in here, get them to see what's going on, and I know there's a lot that is going on. I would agree, there needs to be more on the website, if people read the website, on what is happening. So whether it's the theater, whether it's what SR3, whether it's the new boats that we have down at the Marina, it's really important to get the information on the website, but I know we have our challenges with those owners. So if we could get investors in here to buy up those properties, it'd be awesome, but I'm not sure how that would happen at this point.
Thank you.
So this goes to J.C. Harris, and you are starting with Sumaire.
Parenthetically, you know, after nine and a half years, my doctor has told me that I'm allowed to drink, and that's wonderful timing, in my view, so after the meeting, you can join me up on Marine View Drive, if you want. You know, whichever bar is quietest, I'll be there. Sorry about that, mate. So, how many hours do you think you're going to put into the job if you, if you get it? I mean, you know, kind of give me an idea what you think your week would look like if you were on the council.
I mean, I would hope to answer as many hours as necessary to make.
No, no.
However, I'll be realistic, I'm a family man, I have two young kids, they each do four sports, so my wife and I are running around. I would realistically hope to put ten to twenty hours in a week on gathering the information necessary to be informative enough, and then on top of that, whatever social media presence to give the community for it. I think as a part-time council, I don't think it's realistic to, especially if most of us here have full-time jobs, to try to put in forty hours for a council that there's not forty hours in the day on top of the forty hours we work and the time that we want to spend with our families and enjoy Des Moines. So, twenty hours is, is realistic, anything above that, I think you're going to end up not enjoying Des Moines like you want to and spending your time between two things.
Thank you. Harry, so if there was, if you were emperor of the known universe and you were able to address one large challenge in the city, what would it be? Something really big.
Okay, so, there are people talking, you're, you're saying that you, Councilmember Harris, that you are not going to be asking people the same question?
I am definitely not going to be asking people the same question. They're very different people with completely different backgrounds, and it wouldn't be appropriate.
Okay, I have a comment? Go ahead.
So, I can appreciate that, Councilmember Harris, so I'm just going to give you my dilemma if you do that. What I'm doing is, I have the, I have a relatively large list of questions that I want to ask to the applicants, and so I'm putting checkmarks after each one that gets asked, so that now I have the answer to these, so I'm, what's going to happen is I'm going to have to, like, color code a bunch of Xs if you ask different, and I'll have to keep track of that you asked Tad that question, but nobody else, so, do you see what I'm getting at? I'm, I'm trying to cover all the bases, so, but if your plan is only causing me problems, then, you know, that's, that's the least of our worries, I guess. So I'm gonna, I guess I'm asking you to reconsider, but, but I can work it if you can't.
Well, you know, one does not want to be impolite, but, you know, yeah, well, you know, I mean, just tough nuggets, I'm sorry, it's just.
Okay.
I'm not, I just, I didn't expect that, you know, I would be intruding on anyone else's bookkeeping. I'm just, you know, I'm just.
Just, just making a case for my plan, you go for it.
I'm really sorry, you know, it's, yeah, so, yeah, you know, what, yeah, what's your, what's your one challenge that you really want to get accomplished in your time?
And here I was thinking how to expand on fifteen to twenty hours a week, so, now you have my answer to the first question. The second question really is, what's the one thing, if I can really get that accomplished, and you're giving me complete carte blanche to do whatever I want, yes, then I'm going to own Marine View Drive and Seventh, and I'm going to change it, and I'm going to make it completely developed, all coherently into one theme, a waterland theme, and I'm going to try to do something like Posebo has done. I don't know if you've been there lately, but they have this lovely street that runs through town on an S, they have nice little shops on either side, they've got some wonderful dining experiences in there, and behind that, they have a big parking structure, which you don't have to go through a gate, you actually buy the ticket to park in, and then they have their Marina, and it's really a nice place. Edmonds has done that, to a certain extent, Gig Harbor has managed to accomplish that, and Downtown Olympia on the Edge near the water has managed to do that. So they create a downtown corridor that also attaches to the water, and that's what I'm going to do if I'm king of the Des Moines universe.
Emperor, emperor.
Emperor, emperor, sorry.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Doviac, so, give me an idea what your, you know, you've told me that you are already, you're, you sound like you volunteer a lot of stuff, so what does your, what do you think the job looks like, just practically, in terms of your week?
Oh, in terms of my week now or after I'm appointed?
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
After your.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would be able to devote very little time this week, but I would, I would, I would free up my schedule, is, is the short answer.
Give me like a, sort of your calendar, what, what you think the job looks like?
I think the job looks like serving on a few committees. I think everybody serves on at least three, maybe four committees on the council, so you've got to go attend different meetings, depending on which committees you're meeting, when. I don't know if those meetings are monthly, weekly, quarterly, that kind of thing. A lot of reading, learning from my fellow council members, getting input on the committees that they're on, and just, yeah, spending, spending what time I need. Other people have talked about, you know, fifteen to twenty hours, as I've talked to different council members over the years, that's about the time that they put in. Yeah, I would, I would dial back a lot of the stuff that I do already. I have, I have plans to hand some of, some of the things that I do off, other things that I'm doing are coming to an end, and other things, I don't need to be doing as much. So, I, yeah, I, I just would, I would morph my schedule to accommodate the most important things that I need to do. That's what I do as a father and as a husband now. I've got to play for my son tomorrow night, and he came home today, he did his first play ever, and he was just giddy with excitement, he was like, that was so cool. So, yeah, father first, father and husband first, you know, family first, and then, you know, obviously, if I'm responsible to the public, I've got a bunch of people out here who are ready to bend my ear about what needs to be done around here, and I would be responsive to them as well, so.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thanks.
Mr. Harrington, you, you mentioned that you watch the meetings on Channel, Channel 101. What did you think of the vote, the amendment by Vic Pennington to add, to triple the severance package of the city manager?
Councilmember Harris, I would like to ask for the ability to not answer that question, and I'd like to yield my time to the next person. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sir.
Yes, sir.
What do you think, I'll ask you the same thing I asked.
I didn't watch that particular broadcast.
That's a pity. So, yeah, it was a real, yeah, it was a, yeah. So, yeah, if there was one thing, you know, what's the, what's one thing you would, you would like to accomplish that you think can, you can accomplish in your two years?
Well, as a veteran, I know that Duke University just did a study where sixty percent of businesses discriminate against veterans for customer-facing roles because they feel that they lack emotional intelligence, and that post-9/11 veterans are twice as likely to be unemployed as their civilian counterparts, and that's across all races and backgrounds because a veteran is kind of a slice of America. And so I think there, there's some definite challenges that if I had a chance to make policy, I would make this community a little bit more welcoming to the people that serve our country, so that would be one, and, but make it welcoming to everyone, right, and every walk of life, and so I think we live in a very divisive time, and I think it's important for us to come together as a community, so I'd like to see more cohesion in our community.
Me too, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Banks, how would you have voted on the amendment that Vic Pennington put forward at the end of last meeting?
Well, first of all, out of respect for council decision, I don't really believe as an individual I would have voted any differently. I do believe as a council member, I definitely would have voted for it. People have to realize that that amendment simply means that that, that our city manager cannot be released for no cause, and that's exactly what it means. So I would have voted for it, whether people enjoy that or not.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Ms. Broger, you were fairly expansive in describing how you'd like to see Highline College connected to the downtown. I'd like you to expand on that. How do you think that could be brought about specifically?
So, right now, we already have a great bus route that delivers students around the city. However, there is opinion about how our southern residents don't have the same transportation ability as our northern residents, and so I would encourage the council and myself to look at the opportunities that we have to expand our transportation network. Personally, I live in the Woodmont area. I live near 264th Street and Marine View Drive. And if I were to take the bus, say, to the north end of Des Moines, or pretty much anywhere out of the city and then back into the city, the nearest bus stop to me is several blocks down the road. There's no parking, there's no hub for transportation, and so that's something that I would look at for the city to create.
Thank you.
We are now going to Councilmember Buxton, and she will start with Harry Steinmetz.
Well, if the OCD in me can deal with the upsets.
Mayor. Mayor. Mayor.
Oh, oh, you know what? I'm sorry. Let's, thank you. You know, we've been at this for a while, and I think people could use a break. With the council's permission, I would like to recess us till nine, nine o'clock and then come back. I think it's be fair to the candidates as well as some of the council members up here that have had a bit more water. So, okay, so with that, we will recess until...
We will pick up where we left off, and that is with Councilmember Buxton, and we have Mr. Harry Steinmetz at the podium.
Thank you for waiting for me. There was a party in the ladies' room. Learned a couple new dance moves, so, okay. Hello, Mr. Steinmetz. So what do you believe are our community's greatest assets, and how would you support them? Also, our greatest weaknesses, how would you work to amend them? And for time probably, max, two, each, two weaknesses, two strengths.
Okay, and I'll be as colorful as possible, so it'll fit on your chart.
Oh, thank you.
No, I, I think our greatest assets are, first and foremost, the Marina. And secondly, I think that we have a wonderful community. I mean, we're this kind of funny-shaped city, but everybody wants to be part of it. Nobody wanted to leave when we were all in trouble, and I think that everybody wants to see Des Moines work, and I think that's a fabulous, fabulous asset that we have. And we just need to keep focused on how to move that forward, what do we want it to look like, and keep doing that. And so I think those are the two greatest assets. I think our, our two greatest issues, our problems that we have in Des Moines are the shape of our city is sort of first, and particularly the boundary line on Pack Highway. I mean, that's, it's just crazy. We, there are a number of businesses up there that should be part of Des Moines, we should be getting the tax revenue from those businesses, and we're just not. I don't think Kent can adequately police them. I think Kent's focus is down in the Kent Valley, in their downtown core, and there ought to be a way that we can figure out to divide that up with Kent in a way that makes sense. And so the long, narrow shape of our city makes it expensive to police, but I think we need to do that. And then secondly is, you know, that long, narrow shape gives us a policing problem. When I first moved here, Des Moines had the highest ratio of police to population in the state. Then the CarTab initiative hit, and, boy, we lost a lot of money, and I know that the city was just struggling. They were robbing Peter to pay Paul, using one-time money to try to fund this year, and hopefully we'll find that on the next time. And I think that that shows what the problem is. We've done a good job, and my compliments to the council and to Michael in particular for getting us out of that financial mess, but we can fall right back into it pretty quickly. And so we always need to be careful with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Ted.
Hi.
So could you comment a couple of our greatest assets, how you would, how would you support those, and our greatest liabilities, and what would you do to amend those?
I think our greatest asset's the Marina, the proximity to the water, the, the potential for developing that in a responsible way so that there's still connection to the water and for people to come down there and enjoy the natural beauty that is there, but then also to come and spend money there. Let's, like I said in my, one of my previous answers, Pokemon Go was a great way to bring people here, and I, I think that that was an opportunity missed for us. And then, I know, I have to follow Harry every time, and he keeps taking my answers. The people, the community, the people of the city are our greatest asset, and I think they're the greatest asset of any community. The, the diversity that we have here, the different thoughts and ideas that we can bring together, I think are the greatest, one of the greatest assets of any community. One of our biggest liabilities is just the ability to funnel people to the downtown area to do business during the commuting times. It's insane, and I know most people who live here avoid it, just like down in Puyallup, they avoid Meridian, where I used to live. You just don't go to the places where all the businesses are because there's so much commuting traffic going on. I don't know if there's a way to fix that in particular. And again, Harry keeps taking my answers. The Pacific Highway corridor doesn't feel like it is part of Des Moines, because parts of it are and parts of it aren't. And so I'm going to come back to the, the cohesiveness of the city and say, we don't have, we don't have a look or feel to the city that people, when they drive through, say, "Now I'm in Des Moines. This is where Des Moines is." We have a couple of signs that say, "Welcome to Des Moines," but other than that, it looks like any other place up and down Pacific Highway, and I would work to, to try and change that and bring more cohesiveness to the look of the city.
Thank you. Hi, Dan.
Hi there.
Couple of our greatest assets, how you would support them, a couple of our greatest liabilities, what would you do to amend them?
Okay, thank you. I always, I don't like to look at things as, as liabilities or issues, I like to look at them as opportunities. Definitely our assets in our city are our parks and our Marina, and the other thing that I really, really improve upon, because I'm getting closer to that, is our commitment to senior services here in the city. I think we do a great job doing that, and I'd like to see us do even more to provide senior services for our age-in-place people that live in the town, and also to hopefully improve upon the, the challenges of, of the ever-increasing number of people that are, that are aging in place in our community as well as other communities in the area. So I'd like to see that be also ever-improving. So the issues we have, obviously, is a little bit of the socialization and disconnect between our, our geographically diverse...
We will pick up where we left off, and that is with Councilmember Buxton. And we have Mr. Harry Steinmetz at the podium.
Thank you for waiting for me. There was a party in the ladies' room. Learned a couple new dance moves. So, okay. Hello, Mr. Steinmetz. So what do you believe are our community's greatest assets? And how would you support them? Also, our greatest weaknesses, how would you work to amend them? And for time probably, max two, each, two weaknesses, two strengths.
Okay. And I'll be as colorful as possible, so it'll fit on your chart.
Oh, thank you.
No, I think our greatest assets are, first and foremost, the Marina. And secondly, I think that we have a wonderful community. I mean, we're this kind of funny-shaped city, but everybody wants to be part of it. Nobody wanted to leave when we were all in trouble. And I think that everybody wants to see Des Moines work. And I think that's a fabulous, fabulous asset that we have. And we just need to keep focused on how to move that forward. What do we want it to look like? And keep doing that. And so I think those are the two greatest assets. I think our two greatest issues or problems that we have in Des Moines are... The shape of our city is sort of first, and particularly the boundary line on PACT Highway. I mean, that's, it's just crazy. We, there are a number of businesses up there that should be part of Des Moines. We should be getting the tax revenue from those businesses, and we're just not. I don't think Kent can adequately police them. I think Kent's focus is down in the Kent Valley, in their downtown core. And there ought to be a way that we can figure out to divide that up with Kent in a way that makes sense. And so the long, narrow shape of our city makes it expensive to police, but I think we need to do that. And then secondly is, you know, that long, narrow shape gives us a policing problem. When I first moved here, Des Moines had the highest ratio of police to population in the state. Then the CarTab initiative hit, and, boy, we lost a lot of money. And I know that the city was just struggling. They were robbing Peter to pay Paul, using one-time money to try to fund this year, and hopefully we'll find that on the next time. And I think that that shows what the problem is. We've done a good job, and my compliments to the council and to Michael in particular, for getting us out of that financial mess. But we can fall right back into it pretty quickly. And so we always need to be careful with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Ted.
Hi.
So could you comment a couple of our greatest assets? How you would encourage, how would you support those? And our greatest liabilities, and what would you do to amend those?
I think our greatest asset's the Marina. The proximity to the water, the potential for developing that in a responsible way so that there's still connection to the water and for people to come down there and enjoy the natural beauty that is there. But then also, to come and spend money there. Let's, like I said in my, one of my previous answers, Pokemon Go was a great way to bring people here. And I think that that was an opportunity missed for us. And then, I know, I have to follow Harry every time, and he keeps taking my answers. The people, the community, the people of the city are our greatest asset. And I think they're the greatest asset of any community. The diversity that we have here, the different thoughts and ideas that we can bring together, I think are the greatest, one of the greatest assets of any community. One of our biggest liabilities is just the ability to funnel people to the downtown area to do business during the commuting times. It's insane, and I know most people who live here avoid it. Just like down in Puyallup, they avoid Meridian, where I used to live. You just don't go to the places where all the businesses are because there's so much commuting traffic going on. I don't know if there's a way to fix that in particular. And again, Harry keeps taking my answers. The Pacific Highway corridor doesn't feel like it is part of Des Moines because parts of it are and parts of it aren't. And so I'm going to come back to the cohesiveness of the city and say, "We don't have, we don't have a look or feel to the city that people, when they drive through, say, 'Now I'm in Des Moines. This is where Des Moines is.' We have a couple of signs that say, 'Welcome to Des Moines.' But other than that, it looks like any other place up and down Pacific Highway." And I would work to try and change that and bring more cohesiveness to the look of the city.
Thank you. Hi, Dan.
Hi there.
A couple of our greatest assets, how you would support them? A couple of our greatest liabilities, what would you do to amend them?
Okay, thank you. I always, I don't like to look at things as liabilities or issues. I like to look at them as opportunities. Definitely our assets in our city are parks and our Marina. And the other thing that I really, really improve upon, because I'm getting closer to that, is our commitment to senior services here in the city. I think we do a great job doing that. I'd like to see us do even more to provide senior services for our age-in-place people that live in the town. And also to hopefully improve upon the challenges of the ever-increasing number of people that are, that are aging in place in our community, as well as other communities in the area. So I'd like to see that be also ever-improving. Some of the issues we have, obviously, is a little bit of socialization, a disconnect between our geographically diverse area. We've got north, south, east, and the Marina. So that's the four points on the globe there for that one. I'd like to see us improve up by the PACT Highway. That is the first impression of our city when people get off of I-5 to come down to Des Moines. And that is obviously a challenge for our police officers, a challenge for our attorneys, and sort of things like that. But we, on all the sites that I go to, we continue to have issues up there every single day in that neighborhood, in that area up there. And there has to be some relief at some point for those residents that we need to really work on as a council to really address it aggressively and not kind of passively. And I'd like to see that done, and I would do that as a council member here. Finally, kind of diversity and the council cohesion. I've had past experiences in leadership boards where I've walked in as the new president of that leadership board, and I've had a lot of disconnect and dysfunction in the leadership board I've run. And I call myself the commitment to being, to gluing everything back together a little bit. And I think I'm the positive commitment person for this council that I could put together the opportunity to provide cohesion for this body, as well as the citizens of the city. So, thank you.
Hi, David.
Hello.
So a couple of our greatest assets, and what you do to support those? And a couple of our biggest opportunities, what you could do to amend those or meet those opportunities?
Well, absolutely, our greatest assets are people, right? Look, there are seven people here tonight engaged and interested in making this better community, right? And so I think we should applaud our community for fostering that much engagement in our community. Because if you take away all the buildings, all the businesses, everything, you just leave the people of Des Moines, we're good. We'll rebuild, we'll make things better, and we'll continue to make things better. So the people absolutely are the greatest asset we have. And I think some of, some of our biggest challenges come from kind of that same source of... We are a great community, we are concerned, but there are, like, pressures put on us nationally. Like, there's growing divide in our country, not just, like, politically, but economically. And I think we're going to have, we're going to be hit in the face with these problems in the future. You know, I'm sure the police are going to have problems recruiting enough people to patrol our streets, right? And just getting the people in there to get involved. I volunteer a lot in disaster relief organizations. And it's sad that very few of my generation show up to take care of devastated communities when everything is wiped away. And I think one of the things we can do as an opportunity is to engage our young people and teach them this engagement that we all have and pass that along. So, thank you.
Hi, Louisa. Couple of our greatest assets, how you'd support them? And a couple of our greatest opportunities, how you'd reach to meet those?
Yeah, it's, everyone, again, has said probably what we all wanted to say. I would say that one of our, I think our greatest asset is the city itself. And that includes buildings, the waterfront, it includes our citizens, it includes everything that we work for. I think the other thing is our location. So based on our location, there's an opportunity to really highlight where we are. And a lot of people have said, "I drive 99. I, you know, I go down, you know, any other street I come through. I think I heard I come through Des Moines. There's nothing that says this is Des Moines." So, yeah, there, those are areas that we can certainly improve upon. But we have that treasure. We have this city. We have that opportunity. And I think we can build on that, and I think that's happening now. Again, the communication piece might not be as clear, but it certainly is happening now. I think our challenges, and I said this when I started on council, Pacific Highway South is, has got the craziest boundaries I've ever seen in my life. And so you don't know if you're in Kent, you don't know if you're in Federal Way, you don't know if you're in Sea-Tac. So I know there's no way, but if I were emperor, I'd buy it all, make it all straight, and it would all be Des Moines. But it's not. So I think that's what we need to focus on as well. We've done a lot in terms of Pacific Ridge. There's a lot more activity up there with our officers, there's a lot more park, including more parks up there. But I think what we can do as a council is focus on trying to make those that drive through here stop. And you can't do that unless you get the owners involved, the businesses involved, and the investors involved.
Hi, Mayling. So a couple of our greatest assets, and how you'd support those? And our greatest liabilities, and what you would do to work to solve those?
Thank you for that great question. I love talking about the strengths of Des Moines. I was raised here, as I mentioned earlier. And throughout my years growing up, I got to engage with the beautiful resources that we have throughout Redondo, through Saltwater, through the Marina, and I even partook in that Pokemon Go. Our community is, those are our jewels, those are our strengths. It's what draws families to our area, from, and stay in our area if they're residents, and visit to us. We also have great schools. We have the leisure recreation, like our pool, and our library are great assets. Weaknesses. In my mind, that really means areas of the most potential. And as I mentioned earlier, I talked about what could be done for downtown. And so I'm here to let you know that I'm dedicated. I will learn from the best, from city manager, from staff, input from residents, about what will be a long-lasting solution, what exactly we should bring into downtown to make it the most appealing for our own residents and then people that come and visit. I will make the calls personally if I have to, to get the businesses and the nonprofits and community support that we need to make Des Moines flourish, while keeping that same community feel that I grew up with and that we all enjoy. So, thank you.
It's Emery. So, a couple of our greatest assets, how you would support them? A couple of our greatest liabilities, and what you'd do to work to amend them?
I think first and foremost is the size and the mixture of this community is one of our greatest assets. Having just enrolled our kids in Des Moines Elementary with the amount of kids that are there, having noticed all the different living centers that are coming up. We have a community that is not too big and nimble enough to keep adjusting to itself. We're not a city that is of 100,000-plus. We're a city of just under 40, where we have the capability to continuously build. And because of the size of how Des Moines is laid out, it's going to be a community that's not going to expand too much farther from its size outside of maybe potentially a bunch of apartments coming in, which allows the city to hone in on the fact that it still feels like a community, but it's a lot larger than a small town. And having come from an enrolled town of less than 1,000, I know how that feels when it's too small, or having worked in the city of Seattle where it's too big. Another asset to this community and the city is the location. As much as sometimes that's a hindrance, we have so much potential with Sea-Tac right there and Light Rail getting ready to come here in the next three years right across from Highline, where we can find a way to program and activate all those people to come down here. This is especially true during, like, the game days, where you see all the people parked in Highline, ready to go to the games in Seattle. And that's also a plug for me to say, "Go Dogs." But, but like, the mayor, you have the people who are going to the Sounders Games, the Mariners Games, and the Seahawks. And those people are just going straight from there and heading downtown. And if we can find a way to bring them back down here, even for a moment, that will allow us to at least reap some of that revenue. One of our weaknesses, and I can attest to this, is that it feels like sometimes we're a drive-by city. That means we just go through here, and that's it. And it's nothing more than that and invisibility. And then the last part of our weakness is unfortunately not being able to solve the... How we get to solving this downtown core? Because the way I think we can solve it is, a potential way I think we can solve it is the pressure potentially of social media and everything else to have these owners understand that we are part of this community, and we want to change this for their benefit and for our benefit. I mean, it may not be easy, it may be a process of a few years.
I need to wrap up.
And I think that's one of the other issues.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So moves it on to me, and... You don't have to follow Harry.
No. Been waiting all night for this.
You want to save her in the moment, or you want to get started?
I know, I'm scared. But anyway.
Ted, I just want to know how you'd go about becoming a team member with the current council, but still advocate for those positions that you felt were important?
Well, I don't think those are mutually exclusive at all. I, I've been to a couple of council meetings with the current council makeup, and I already see, I've seen the 5-2, 4-2 votes already. I think I have a good rapport with everybody on the council already. I think that even those council members that I've butted heads with in the past, we've moved past that, and I think that I would have an easy time working with each person individually and as a group. And then, and like I said, that's not mutually exclusive to advocating for the positions that I feel are important. I think that the positions I feel are important are what's good for the city as a whole. And it would be working together with each, each person or group of the council to determine where is, where's, if there's middle ground that needs to be found, let's find it. If there are compromises that need to be made, let's find those as well. And let's do what's together, what's best for the city. So that's how I would do that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Let's see. Mr. Harrington. So again, I'd just like to know what your approach would be? How you would go about becoming a team member with the current council and still advocate for the positions that you felt were very important?
Thank you, Mayor. My experience as a part of a leadership team in the past has always been one, like I talked about, my last time I was up here was being a part of, being either the bottle or being the glue. And the way I've gone about that is to approach everything that I do in an unbiased manner. This council's not up here for their own individual agendas, their own individual things that they want. To a certain degree, they're up there as voters and then city citizens. So my opinion doesn't matter. It's the residents' opinions that matter. And the residents use their vote to make their voice heard, and they use this forum to get their voice heard. Our job as a council, to keep things coherent, to keep things together, is to make sure we hear all the voices, gather all the information, make very concise and educated decisions on what should be done and move forward in the city. With obviously a lot of things going on, a lot of pressures on every single corner, whether it be in law enforcement, whether it be in our communities, whether it be in our Parks and Recreation, our Marina, anything we have going on, we must all meet as a council and as a staff and come up with a program, and all leave the room as one voice. And that has, obviously, would be the one way I would be an asset for this council to bring that to the table in this, in this forum. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe the next one's David Lee. So again, how would you go about becoming a team member with the current council and still advocate for positions you feel are important?
I think that's two separate questions. I think you should always advocate for the things that you feel are important, but there's tact, right? There's a bright way to do things. And that kind of means just not getting overly emotionally involved. Just be polite and courteous to everyone that you deal with. Even if someone's... I had a nurse yell at me for absolutely no reason. And one of my partners, he pulled me aside, and he says, "You don't know what that woman went through five minutes before you walked in the door. She could have had the worst day ever." So it's not your fault, you did nothing wrong, but just give that person a little grace. And so I think if there's, you know, a snap at someone or at me, I think allowing people that grace will help things run a lot smoother, right? And I think that's really what it comes down to is, in building a team, is, you know, we're going to have disagreements, but let's be respectful of one another. And let's work towards doing the people's work, right? And advocating for decisions. So as long as we're all doing that, I believe we do all in good faith. So I think I'd be a good team member. So, thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Louisa. How would you go about becoming a team member with the current council and still advocate for those positions that you feel are important?
It's unfortunate, but I do believe that the good of the general public, the general good of the public, our responsibility as council members. We took the oath to serve this city. And so, yes, it takes respect. It takes openness. It takes collaboration. I've never had a hard time doing that. I'm not too sure, in this particular environment, how that would work today with this council. I think, very honestly, if people would open up and talk about whatever the issue is, if it's not a city issue, then perhaps you could get down to the core of what the problem is. But you can't work together if you can't be open and honest together. And I think that's what's important. And I, you, most of you know me. I have no problem being open and honest. I have no problem voicing my opinion. But it's about the general good of this city. And if we can't rise above that and figure out how to work together, regardless of how we might feel about process and procedures, because it is about moving forward, not backward, not making our own personal marks. And some of us have tried to do that in the past, but we came together and realized this is about the city. And so I've done that over the 30 and 40 years that I've worked. And I've done it on this council in the past, and I know I can do it in the future. It just depends on how honest the council members are.
Mayling? Did I say that correctly?
Mayling?
Mayling? Okay, thank you. My handwriting, sometimes I write fast enough, I can't read it myself. So again, how would you go about becoming a team member with the current council and yet still advocate for positions that you feel are important?
Thank you for that question. One of the things, and this is something a little bit about me first. One of the things that drew me into getting involved with politics was that I saw that there, not necessarily here, but that in our state and our national politics, there was such a divide, such an inability for people to communicate with each other and really share their opinions. And I saw this, and I was like, "No, one day I'm going to be up there, and I'm going to be that agent that helps team build, that helps reveal what truths there are, and get things done from there." We all want the best for the city. That is our motive. I believe with clarity of mind, we can create a solution together. I listen, and I'll sit. This is how I'll do it. I'll sit with each, every one of you, most of you. You know, I'd be new, I don't know everything, I don't try to know everything and this is a, a great opportunity for me to look and learn and listen. I'm patient. Um, through my experience, although this is nonpartisan, I have experience, um, negotiating and facilitating between differences of opinion, maybe R and D, who knows? Um, however, I will also question if I see something or hear something that doesn't make logical sense. If it doesn't make sense, then I'm gonna question. I think that, you know, you'd want that. But overall, I'm open-minded. So if you have an opinion and you feel passionate about it and you have logic to back it up, I'm listening. Thank you.
Thank you. So Mayor, did I get that right?
Semeray.
Semeray.
It's hard, it's semeray, it's one of those you roll whatever R you can or can't.
I'm gonna apologize right now though, cause I'm not a good R roller, okay? So, anyway, I'll work at it. Um, so how would you go about becoming a team member with the current council yet still advocate for the positions you feel are important?
I would like to first by starting out saying that I think a healthy conflict is important in the council and by that I mean, the reason why there's seven people here is that I doubt every one of you would have the exact same opinion. And with that healthy conflict and usually that translates into passion, that passion means that you care about the community, which also means you care about your constituents and that is what is the start of the process to allow, I think, people to mesh. And with me understanding the fact that I may, one, not personally get along with somebody or I may not professionally get along with somebody, but if I'm in council, my job is to get along, to make sure that I'm advocating for not only my constituents and community and my personal beliefs, but also the fact that they are doing the same thing and to come up with a way to find that way to, um, to, to be in full consensus, especially when, um, I think somebody brought up earlier where votes get to the point where it appears that there's certain council members who are voting one way and certain others and that, that should be bridged as soon as possible because I think it's something that we can learn that you, the ultimate goal is to serve this community and we may not agree with it, but just to convince somebody else. Um, I think, uh, being vulnerable in the process before, during and after is very important. Um, this is especially important, um, with di- disagreements. Um, this allows you to hopefully understand that, um, that this process is always gonna be difficult unless it's a simple yes, no, but I'm like the most random, simple thing. But most things are, that, um, that people care about are not gonna be simple and when they're not simple, they're difficult and when you're not allowing yourself to, um, see the whole picture, um, it becomes this feeling and aura of, uh, conflict, which again, I think conflict's okay as long as at the end of the day that we can resolve it.
Thank you. Mr. Steinmetz. How would you go about becoming a team member with the current council and still advocate for positions you feel are important?
Well, I'd like to think that I already am to a certain degree. I mean, I've been to so many meetings in the last few years, I kind of feel almost like I've been a part of this council. Um, and I know each one of you individually, uh, I've sat down and talked to you, some I'm very good friends with, some I'm still getting to know. Um, but the bottom line is that on an individual level, you find out what's important to people and you try to have a discussion about that. And so you frame it in that way. You also need to look forward and not backwards, not recriminations, not trying to, uh, take a shot where you can or anything like that. I think it's really important to keep the focus on what is good for the city of Des Moines because that's why we're all here. And as several have stated, we're, it's not about the individual, because if we were all gonna agree, there wouldn't be a point in having a council. But it's about trying to figure out where the middle ground is and how do you put together, um, the decision-making process so that there's a majority and hopefully a supermajority, uh, in unanimity if you can find it on any of the various issues. And sometimes there won't be, but you don't get mad. You don't let that get in the way of what's gonna happen next. Um, one of the, you know, as a lawyer, one of the things I do for the living is deal with sort of high conflict, uh, situations. I have to go in and negotiate on behalf of my clients, I have to explain things to my clients, sometimes there's conflict there. And then also, you know, if it doesn't resolve, you go to trial and it's a up or down. You know, there is no compromise in a trial. And yet, almost every single trial that I've been in, uh, with somebody on the other side, uh, we've been friendly, if not friends, uh, after that. So I think that the things that I've just described are the same, uh, qualities that I would come bring to the council to try to do this and I hope that I can help be that bridge on the council. Thank you.
And this takes us to our wrap-up. And we will, yeah, there you go.
Yes, okay. Um, I, uh, I want to thank everybody for putting themselves out there. Um, as you guys can see, uh, it was a little bit of a gauntlet, wouldn't you agree? Um, and to, to do that, um, I admire you more.
I need to bring you to...
To the question.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so you've heard each other speak. My question to you is what differentiates you from the other people applying?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, before I comment on that, I would, uh, would like to have a couple of closing arguments, closing arguments. Now it's not like an attorney. Uh, first I want to thank you, thank the other six candidates for being here, uh, thank the council, the staff, uh, volunteers and everybody that, that's bringing it here in this hot room this evening. And also to, uh, talk about respect as well. Um, I was born and raised in Austin, Texas and down there when I grew up in the seventies and eighties, we still said yes ma'am and yes sir to our teachers. And I'm not saying we'll ever get back to that here in 2020, but, uh, I command respect and I also give people respect where it's due and, uh, would love to go back to that someday and say yes sir and yes ma'am again. Uh, and finally devotion, uh, both time devotion, we, I kind of missed that question, but the time devotion to this position, if I was the council member elected to this position, um, would be to do, take a page from council member nutting and I would drag my kids to virtually every city function that we would have, uh, and make my wife very happy. Once again, as you say, you know, happy wife, happy life, uh, would be the way I'd do it. So things that you might not know about me and things that I would bring to the table as, as a potential council member is that I'm fair, objective and I always listen. I'm a very good listener and this is the most I've spoken in probably six months. Uh, I'm more of a listener than a speaker. I tend to think things over, perhaps sometimes too much, especially at home. Uh, but one of the things that comes out of that is I do at the end make decisive and objective decisions on, uh, the, the voices of, that I'm being heard of, the voices of the constituents, the voices of, of the taxpayers and the voters and, uh, the community members of the Des Moines. So you can expect that from me is a little bit of respect as well as a little bit of devotion to the position, whether it's, uh, twenty hours one week, two hours the next week, forty hours the next week, that's the devotion I will bring to the table. And I thank you all again for giving me the opportunity to come out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So you've heard the other speak?
Yes.
What differentiate, differentiates you from the other people applying?
Well, I think, um, first I would like to acknowledge what, you know, we have in common that we all care about our community and we all, um, took the time out of our day, uh, to try and make a difference. So kudos to everyone for that. Um, but I think, um, I try to keep my comments so- short, uh, so efficiency?
Sorry, no, we didn't.
Yeah. What differentiates you from the other people applying?
Um, well, first, let me say, this has been quite the experience. Um, I want to thank council, I want to thank staff and, and I want to thank the community because this has been a long process here, but you've heard a lot, it's been very interesting. But I want to thank the other applicants. I don't think there is, there isn't one of you that I wouldn't vote for, let me just say that, because I'm very impressed and I think it's extremely helpful to know that there are other people in this community that really want to serve. Because we've always thought, where is everybody? Why can't they get in here and, you know, we'll have one person at council meetings and it's like, where is everybody? So, thank you. Now, I think I stand apart because, not just because I've been on council for the last five years, but I understand that it takes the dedication to read the information, get the questions answered that you have before your council meeting, ask intelligent questions at council meeting. And I think what's important as well, and, and I think we all realize that, is that you have to have a passion, a passion for what goes on in the city, a passion for your fellow council members and a passion for staff because dang, you guys do a lot of work. And so we have volunteers here, we're essentially volunteers, because if anybody thinks we're in the back room voting for raises, we don't live in Washington DC, we live in Washington State. So I believe I can hit the ground running. I've been on committees that I know are extremely important, public safety, emergency management, municipal facilities. I've been a liaison for several of the other committees. Uh, you want to talk about dedicating time, the craziness was I actually decided to serve on two other committees outside the ones we're responsible to serve on. But I think I'm a listener as well. So as far as listening, that takes many people, it doesn't take just one. You have to listen and you have to talk and you have to be collaborative.
Thank you. Um, you've heard the other speak, what differentiates you from the other people applying?
Well, I guess, um, I'm passionate, everyone else here is passionate, everyone here could do the same job I could do and, and do it well. So I don't think anything makes me too special, but here's what I could offer. I'm very thorough, I'm very dedicated, I love learning. I will, um, I'm the kind of person who will read the terms and agreements on those, um, those, those things before you accept something. And I feel like that's the kind of person that needs to, uh, be on the council. Someone who is really dedicated to learning the ins and outs of how things work and is willing to see how things could be made, uh, potentially even greater, um, by nitpicking within reason. Um, as an independent contractor, um, my time is pretty freed up, it's my time. And so if I, uh, if I'm appointed, it will be very much dedicated to the work that needs to be done here for the city and to be able to be in communication with the residents. I also oversee a budget, um, at the nonprofit, I'm a treasurer on four, so I have experience, um, working with finances as well as, um, I can manage, I think I manage my own personal finances pretty well too. So hopefully that instills some confidence that I could, uh, overlook a city budget as well. I'm also young, I guess. Um, and, and this means that I feel like I could have a pull with young people in the city, bring in young people and be a face that shows that Des Moines is young and innovative. So, uh, those are the things that I could bring. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, you've, you've heard the other speak, what differentiate, differentiates you from the other people applying?
I want to quickly say that I don't think there's much difference on any of these members or these potential, uh, council members, um, understanding of local issues and their passion. And with that, I think we're gonna get in this point where we don't answer this question, so I think what'll make, will make me different is just trying to answer this question without saying anything further, that I am who I am, I'm a father, I am a, a tired father like The Walking Dead with these kids and that's who I am and that's what I'll bring to the council. It is not gonna be a much difference, I think, in everything that we talk about.
Thank you. You've heard the other speak, uh, what differentiates you from the other people applying?
Um, I never had to go after a tad. No, I think that everybody up here, uh, everybody who's applying would do the job, would do a fine job. Uh, there's lots of passion, there's lots of intelligence, there's lots of, uh, great communication skills and, and I'm, uh, I'm really, it's overwhelming to see the quality of people that are up here applying for this and I think it's wonderful. Um, but I think, uh, the question really for you is who's got the right mix? Everybody's gonna do that job a little differently. And so the question for you is who's got the right mix and I hope you feel that I'm the one with the right mix. Um, I've been up here trying to be involved in the community, particularly at the council level, because I think that's where it's really important. You've seen me for probably the last five or six years, coming into meetings, being here, uh, understanding the issues, working to figure them out. I've tried always, uh, when I got up to speak, uh, to give you some sort of a positive, a forward comment, uh, something that I think can move that conversation forward and not just complain about things. And as a consequence, I think that's one of the things that I really bring to this, that I tend to look at the future and I want to see things moving forward. And hopefully, uh, that allows me to, you know, sort of bridge some of the issues that are on this and find out ways that we can do that. Secondly is in, you know, I, I deal with conflict resolution, uh, professionally and I think I bring that to the table. Thirdly is I think that I'm a very fast learner, um, I think that I understand a lot of the issues that are here and I don't think that it's a real downside, uh, to appoint somebody who doesn't have all the experience of being on the council, although that's very valuable. Uh, but I think that somebody who does have that will help ultimately get to that right mix. And so I'm hoping that that's what differentiates me. Thank you.
You are.
Oh, wow.
Unless Harry follows you.
Okay. I put glue on a seat.
All right. Final question, you've heard each other speak, what differentiates you from the other people applying?
I have a master's degree in cybersecurity and leadership. Um, that is part of my passion for, uh, working in IT that I've done for over twenty years. Um, I have a degree in social work. Um, part of my work in IT, uh, over the time that I've been, been in that is, um, translating between the users and management. And so being able to talk to the people who are using the computers and what they need and what they have and then advocating for their needs to the management in terms that management can understand. So management cares about money, mostly. Um, they, they care about the people who work for them, but when they look at a proposal, they're, they go down to the bottom line and say, "How much is this gonna cost and what are we gonna get for it?" And I've spent my career doing that, listening to what people need and then advocating for that. Um, I've started groups on social media to bring the city together. Um, after the Woodmont rehab fiasco, um, this city was really unsettled and kind of, I, I felt like we needed something, I mean, people spent a long time on social media just complaining about the rehab center coming in and then when it went away, there was kind of this void. And so I started Des Moines Rocks. Who can get angry at painted rocks? Well, two people, but I've gotten two messages in five years of people who are angry about something with painted rocks. But by and large, it's a happy thing that brought people together. When, um, a buy-nothing group, a gifting group split the city in two, I created a group that encompassed the whole city again because that group that's not part of our city doesn't understand how our city works. And our city is a community that needs to stay... And our city is a community that needs to stay together. And so, they split us into north and south, north and south need to stay together and work together. And so, I said, and, I won't get into the other group that I made, because that's been divisive this week, but, I've been, I've been a peacemaker in all of these groups, including the divisive one this week. Some of you know what I'm talking about. But ultimately, I try to be a peacemaker and bring people together, and I think that's what sets me apart.
Thank you.
All right, well, council, it's, it's 10 to 10. There's a lot of people who've hung out with us all night. I don't know if we can get through, matter of fact, I, I don't believe we can get through the whole list. There are several who have signed up, though, and I, I'm thinking, at three minutes apiece, it's worth it to try, if the council would be willing to extend to 10:30. I'll make the motion to extend to 10:30. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, yeah.
Okay, motion was made by myself, seconded by Councilmember Buxton and Deputy Mayor Mahoney. Any discussion?
I absolutely think that we should do everything we can to allow every single person who's put their name on those sheets to speak tonight. This has been a long night, and to send somebody home without being able to say their piece, especially somebody who people have made special arrangements to be here tonight. So, that's, that's my opinion.
I, I understand, and I think we'll do our best. We also have to be present. So, given that, though.
I'll get you a Coke.
So, but, but, let's, let's, we're starting with going to 10:30, right?
Comment?
Yes.
Is there any way to turn down the thermostat in this joint?
I wish I knew, I don't know. It's temporary, and it might get cold.
No, it's just for the public, I mean, I see people just like sweating to the oldies, and I'm like, you know, yeah.
Okay. So, is all in favor?
So, can, just one more point of discussion, so are we talking about making a hard stop at 10:30 for tonight, and then finishing up the business of this next week?
Yeah, there's no, I mean.
Do we include that, or?
Well, no, right now, we're just talking about extending the meeting, and we're going to go into the next part of this. I, let me see, they're not numbered lines, just a second. There's about 21 people who have signed up, that's about an hour's worth of dialogue, if the council wants to just agree to go to 11 o'clock right now, but I'll tell you, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a hard stop.
I'm, I'm thinking we just do the first 10, and call it a night.
Well, let's, let's, let's take it time-wise, okay? Let's take it to 10:30, we're not going to get through all of them. We will pick up at the next meeting where we left off in the comment, and let's, let's do our, our best, because, folks, we appreciate you've been here with us all night, it is warm, I know you like to see us sweat, but it's not reciprocal. So, if, if everybody's in favor of going till 10:30 at this time, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we have.
I'd like to go to 11. I think people can, you know, exercise some restraint, maybe, you know, self-edit to two minutes, and it's just, you know, it, it's just, yeah, I think it's self-evident.
Is that a motion to go to, to extend to 11?
It, it is indeed, yes. I make a motion to extend the meeting to 11 with a hard stop.
Second.
Motion is to extend the meeting to 11 PM with a hard stop. All those in favor, please, any discussion, I'm sorry.
I, I think with no hard stop at 11:30, I mean, at 10, 10:32, see where we're at with how many people have gone through, and to make a motion to proceed from there.
From 10:30 to 11?
Yes.
Okay, because that's one thing that we can do, as long as we are before the end time, we can do that, just, so, now we have, is that your motion?
Well, I thought that's what the motion was that was on the table, was not a hard stop.
Oh, now we have stacked motions, though.
Well, a quick point of order, the requirement to extend the meeting requires three-fourths of the council, so the original motion to extend to 10:30 failed.
Oh, okay.
So we have a motion right now on the floor to extend it to 11, so we need to vote on that motion. And then depending on how that motion goes, we can readdress Councilmember Nutty's motion, which was a bit different than the previous motion.
There, there's no, there's no admonition in ending early, if, in other words, if, if it, you know, people are done at 10:45, we can just call it a night, right?
Correct.
Okay, well, the motion on the table right now is to extend the meeting to 11 o'clock. If we get all the public input, then we will have a hard stop when the public input is done. Does that depict the motion well?
Perfectly, sir.
And the seconder was?
Me.
Okay, and that, that articulates the motion, as you understand? Okay, so we'll deal with that. All in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, now we have the extension to 11, we can stop early. Do we need to entertain, or do you wish to withdraw your motion?
I withdraw.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this point, we will move into public comment, and I believe the first person is Susan Corey. Yes, wait, I'm sorry, I should say this, when you get to the podium, please state your name and the city in which you live, then you'll have up to three minutes.
Susan Corey, Des Moines. Wayne Corey couldn't be here tonight, so I speak for both of us. It has been our privilege in getting to know and work with Louisa Banks, as a friend, neighbor, and fellow volunteer. From her long service on the Arts Commission, to her support of the farmers market, and community events, and fundraisers, she is always there to offer her support and vision. We were honored to work for her in her successful campaign for council. We have appreciated her common sense approach in working with other council members and city staff for solutions to the many challenges facing our city, including finding ways to make it solvent again. She has brought the much-needed perspective on the diverse needs of our community. There is more work to be done, and we would like to recommend Louisa Banks for the vacant city council position. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person that signed up is Nadia Curtis.
Nadia Curtis, resident of Des Moines. Good evening, mayor, council members, city manager, staff, and Des Moines residents. I've lived in Des Moines for 34 years. During that time, I've seen many council members sit at that desk. The city of Des Moines has faced many challenges, and some were in the not-too-distant past. Tough decisions were made, and many of the challenges were overcome in making Des Moines a better city. But we still have a lot of ways to go, and much work to be done. While we welcome our two new council members, who are learning the ropes, we now have a vacant council seat that needs to be filled. We need someone who is experienced, dedicated, committed, and ready to continue the work that has been implemented. We need someone whose record already speaks for itself, and that person is Louisa Banks. Thank you for your time, and thank you to all the candidates who are applying for the position.
The next speaker is Faiza Bradford.
Good evening, I'm Faiza Bradford, I live in Des Moines. I'm here in support of the appointment for Louisa Banks. As an operational leader with extensive skills and experience in large budget management and oversight, she specializes in complex systems and structures, where balancing the needs of people, systems, and resources is critical, while maintaining the respect of colleagues, employees, and labor, labor unions. She understands the value and contribution of each employee group. During her time on the city council, Ms. Banks has demonstrated bold, courageous, and collaborative leadership, when faced with some very difficult decisions in order to set the city on a trajectory towards a healthy budget and financial stability. As a Des Moines citizen for 17 years, my family's safety is of paramount concern. I appreciate that during Ms. Banks' time on the city council, the police department has been fully staffed, and strategies implemented, implemented to increase the department's efficiency. She has also supported the proactive efforts of the city's emergency management plan to be responsive to the community's safety. Additionally, as a citizen, my husband and I have been curious and concerned about the vitality and underutilization of our marina, and other areas that have the opportunity to attract tourists, residents, and produce revenue. We have been encouraged and optimistic by the strategic economic development that we are currently observing and experiencing over the past five years. As a school board member of Highline School District, I've been pleased with the collaborative and contributory ways that our district has worked with the city council towards the safety and education of our students in Des Moines. Ms. Banks has added voice of advocacy that has helped us lean in and identify winning solutions for students and families. This includes school boundary revisions, as well as the support and partnership with having school resource officers in our schools. During this past election, Ms. Banks just narrowly lost to her opponent. This signifies to me that our community was evenly split, and there is largely confidence in her leadership and ability to provide governance and oversight as Des Moines continues to work toward being a thriving city that attracts residents and tourists alike. I hope you will give great consideration to the appointment of Ms. Banks. I would have an assurance in knowing that her knowledge, skill, experience, and passion is at work on my behalf. Thank you for your time and your service.
Dale Bright? He's gone. Okay. Billy Heatherington?
Heatherington, yes, correct. Good evening, council, staff, my name is Billy Heatherington, I'm actually a resident of Tacoma, but I'm, I'm an employee at Labor's Local Union 242, up on Pacific Highway, I'm here to represent the members of Local 242. Local 242 has had offices here in Des Moines since November 2017. Our local prides itself in our community engagement. Current and past council members that sit here tonight, and as well as Louisa, have been in and out of our local through several, several events that we've had with our membership and engaging in the community. Sorry, I lost myself here. Louisa Banks has been a huge supporter of this. Louisa has been involved in several activities that we've held at our local, and invited us to engage in numerous other activities in and around Des Moines. During my time getting to know Louisa, she has, as she has served on council, I'm thankful for how open and honest she has been on issues that affect Des Moines, the Des Moines community. Her willingness to listen to any and all issues, and act in a timely manner, has been a notice by myself and the members of Local 242. I hope this council will give strong consideration to former council member Banks when they make their decision on the vacant council position. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Carboni Rogers.
Good evening, I'm Catherine Carboni Rogers, I live in Des Moines, and I'm here to advocate for the appointment of Louisa Banks to the vacancy, for three reasons. One is that she has a proven track record as a dedicated, thoughtful council member. She's responsive, she's in the community all the time, and she gets the economic development and vision that this council is trying very hard to promote. And for me, that's personal, because Ken and I never would have gotten the quarterdeck off the ground if it hadn't been for the support of this council, and Louisa's a big part of that. And she has continued to support our business, as other members of the council have, because she understands that it's not just enough to get a business up and running, it takes nurturing in the long term. And I really appreciate a council member who walks the talk. Secondly, Louisa has a lot of support in the community, as was pointed out, and no disrespect to Councilmember Harris, but it's not like she was voted out on a landslide. Nearly half the people who voted in that election voted for Louisa. And the council has this unique opportunity now, to give everybody who voted in that election, the council member that they chose. Third reason is, as most of you know, I work for Highline Public Schools, and we have the most diverse school board in the state, possibly in the country, and Faiza Bradford is on that board. And I have seen up close what a difference it makes to have people be able to see themselves reflected in their government. When they look at their government and they don't see anyone who looks like them, or has their life experiences, they feel further disenfranchised and disconnected. But when they do see people that look like them and reflect their experiences, they become so much more involved and invested in their community. And, again, no disrespect to this council, I know you're all very good people, trying the best you can to represent everyone in our community, but the fact is that this council doesn't come close to reflecting the diversity of the Des Moines community. And that's something that Louisa brings to the council that no one else can bring. And I would like to add one other thing, and that is that I appreciate all of the candidates for being willing to volunteer and serve, but Louisa is the only candidate who wants this job so much, that she put her name on the ballot and did the hard work of campaigning, and I think that says a lot. So I encourage you to appoint Louisa Banks.
Bill Lynn Scott.
I'm Bill Lynn Scott, I live in Des Moines, mayor, council. I, too, am here to advocate for Louisa Banks. I think she has some incredible set of attributes and experience, and she's an individual who recently completed her business career, some 33 years with a large public organization, held many senior positions, managing large staffs, and projects, and operations. So she's somebody that actually, you know, understands business and, and operations with it. In that time period, she had an opportunity, or made time for, her volunteering in the community, and most noteworthy to me was Police Advisory Board, and the Arts Commission. And that continued on, and I think it's 2015, she, too, was appointed to this council, and the next year, she ran and was elected to that, that position. So, we know her well, you know her well, and she was a part of the council that has done some wonderful things for this city, with financial stability, economic development, and, and public safety. And I think she gets a lot of credit for that, and, and, and she, she helps. And the thing that I appreciate about her is, she, she really does have an ability to communicate in every corner of the city, and come back with inputs that kind of ensure we're making the right kind of decisions on behalf of the city. She did, as mentioned, she, she ran in the last election, and narrowly missed the opportunity there, and, and I think there's some, some recent data there that says, you know, if you want to know what the public thinks, she's got substantial people in the public that wanted to see her on the council, and to continue on. There are some great applicants here tonight, I'm really impressed, I was so surprised when we had eight of them, and so, you know, I can't thank you enough, and everybody's encouraged about that excitement, that you brought a lot of excitement here, honestly. And, but when I, when I look at kind of the potpourri of things Louisa has to offer this, it's hard for me not to, to look at her and say, we need to have her back on this council. So, thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Keith Weir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Keith Weir, and I am a resident of Des Moines. I, too, am here to speak in favor of the appointment of Louisa Banks to the vacant seat on the council. I've known her since before she was a council member, dealt with her from a labor perspective, while she was at the port, and found her to be fair and open and inquisitive, and always had a nuance about understanding and working to come to a conclusion that was, you know... had a nuance about understanding and working to come to a conclusion that was, you know, not everybody's happy, but, you know, a good negotiation means that both sides walk away feeling that they've won something. So with a third of the council seated here right now, brand new, causes me, as a resident, a point of consternation, we're on a we're on a pathway to, you know, a solution. We've dug ourselves out of the problems of the past. We've got new blood on the council, some would say energizing, great, but we have new blood on the council still getting under their feet and understanding the path to progress to move forward. We have a candidate who has the experience to bring that back and and be a solid base to help move the council forward for the next year until the seat is up for reelection. Is that my understanding? It was one-year appointment, correct? Nothing against all the candidates here, that's great. Be a candidate. You've got a year to get ready. Get your campaign ready. You've got great messaging. I enjoyed listening to you all. Happy birthday, by the way. So use this time, right, and and get ready and come back at it, okay? I appreciate the fact that we do have an involved citizenry, as other folks have said enough, to feel the need to come forward and want to serve. That's great. You know, when you sit and you look at, you know, social media, as I mentioned, I'm not a great user, I am a purveyor and look at things, and if you stick your head in that box and just look at next door or whatever, you would think that the world is ending. So it it's great to see a roomful of people that chose to come out here and stay till potentially eleven o'clock, and with that, I'm not going to drag my time on anymore and try and get us out of here in a timely fashion, but again, I give my support to Louisa for the vacant seat.
Thank you. Justin Kreip.
Well, it's hard to only have three minutes, but I like to talk. Good evening, council. My name's Justin Kreip, Des Moines. I'm the president of the Des Moines Police Guild, and I'm speaking before the council tonight to impress the guild's strong desire to see the vacant seat be filled by Councilmember Louisa Banks. As I'm sure you're all already aware, the Des Moines Police Guild endorsed Ms. Banks during the most recent election, and her support for her was based on a few key factors. Her long support and involvement with the Des Moines Police Department, her years of experience in the council, and her reputation and hard work and dedication to making the city of Des Moines a better place for residents, businesses, and employees. With with Councilmember Pennington stepping down, he has not only left a vacant position, but he's also, the council has also lost a great deal of firsthand knowledge on what it takes to to bring a city from near bankruptcy to a healthy place. Louisa can help minimize the gap, bringing bringing similar firsthand knowledge of the tough decisions made in order to have a more sustainable city. Sorry. As employees of the of the city, our members recall these these times and the uncertainty among us. As we reflect now, a relatively short time later, we feel happy of the current state of the city, and we believe that thanks to the work of our council, our city manager, and the sacrifices made by all the employees in the city, we would like to see this continue going forward, and we feel that the work ethic and experience Louisa has and offers and provides is the best opportunity for continued growth and improvement to the city. Thank you.
Marnie Sivores? Is that here? Okay. Vic Pennington.
Vic Pennington, City of Des Moines, and for you that don't know, I'm the reason you're here. So I've been a resident of Des Moines, and you know, this is going to be strange with only three minutes because Jeremy's going to get his wish, I'll finally land the plane. You know, I've been a resident for Des Moines for over fifty years, and it's been an honor to serve this community, it's been an honor to serve this community in the capacity of a water district commissioner, of a city council member, as your deputy mayor, and for the years that I've I've been in the fire service and now as your fire chief. It's it's a critical time for the city of Des Moines. Five years ago, we were staring at bankruptcy. Mayor Pena and I were elected to to be the leaders of of the council, and and we were looking at at were we going to have to divide the city between Federal Way, Burien, Sea Tac, Kent? So we rolled up our sleeves and went to work with with the city manager, Michael Mathias. And we ended up saving the city, and that took a lot of work. That took a lot of work from all of the council members, commitment from from the the city staff, and there were some hard decisions that were made, and they weren't fun, and they were difficult. We had to lay people off, we had to put people on out on furloughs. But at the end of the day, we went from $400,000 in a in a reserve account to $5 million. The city became solvent, it became strong, it became sustainable, and that was a successful accomplishment of the city council. Only those that have served on the city council during that time and faced that challenge can understand how difficult that was. I'm here to commend the council that overcame that, that challenge, and endorse for my seat that I vacated, Louisa Banks, who stood beside me in her council every step of the way, every step of the way. I'm proud that she has put her her hat back in the ring after after a loss of of election, forty-nine percent. Now, this isn't about an election, because if it was about an election, there's a lot of folks here that have lost elections before by greater margins than that, some of them over eighteen hundred votes. But everybody, everybody has the right to come back and do this again. I'm very proud, and I wholeheartedly endorse Louisa Banks for this position. Thank you.
Ernest Thompson? No, Er- Er- no, Ernest Thompson. He left, okay. Now I'll say Rick Johnson.
Yeah, I'm Rick Johnson. I'm living Redondale Beach. I'm going on sixty-four years down there. I'm thankful, thank the mayor, the council, the staff, and the audiences. I didn't know this was going to be a campaign manager, a campaign today with for Banks. I think that's an insult to these other six councilor candidates, that everybody comes up here talking how well Louise, and she did a good job, but the point is, the people voted. They voted for change, and they still want change. If you go into this website, Des Moines City website, in black and white, transparency, you guys have any transparency in all the five years I've been going to mountain meetings? Not one of you. There's animosity among the the council right now because you don't want to, you got a couple that don't want to go along with your way. Everybody knows about the Seven O Club, but when the new two council members came on, that that went away, and you're not happy with it. So you really want what you had before, people that go along with anything. I can't understand seven people always voting the same way, day after day, or week after week, month after month. I'm mad. I live in the city, and you guys don't listen. Go home tonight, look up the word transparency and see what the definition is, and we're not seeing it. I'm not the only one. We have an unofficial unofficial voting on the candidates running, and Louise wasn't on the top. I don't want to be, I'm sorry, Louise, I just, I'm up here saying this, but I don't think it's fair to these these gentlemen and ladies, that they come in here and spend their time at a council meeting and take the opportunity to try to do it, and you, I don't know how that you get so many people rooting for you. Not one was other than other than you tonight. After listening to the candidates, the applicants, my top three choices, Harry, Chad, and I think it was Brian, were my top three, so if it makes any difference. I'm sorry, but.
Okay, thank you.
That's how I feel.
Steve Edmondson.
Mr. Mayor, council, city manager, Mathias, thanks for the opportunity, thanks for staying late, thanks to all the candidates. In 2017, I supported Harry Steinmetz in his city council race for an open seat against Tracy Buxton. I worked really hard for Harry, I put up signs, I did social media, I held a fundraiser, did a couple of asks, and we know how that turned out, and I'm sorry about that, Harry. The 2017 campaign was hard fought and clean. My second lesson, my second lesson in that campaign, voters didn't make a mistake in that campaign. I don't always agree with Councilmember Buxton, but I'm glad she's up there. She's a solid leader, she's fair, she's available to the community, she works hard, she's become my friend. My third lesson from that 2017 race was that in hindsight, that race was a showcase for two excellent candidates, very impressive. For the same reasons then as now, it's the right time to place Harry Steinmetz on the city council. He's a lawyer, a businessman, he has substantial statewide legislative experience, he's very independent, we will immediately, immediately benefit from this skill set. There is no ramp up. He's smart and funny, and he knows how to get along well with others. And yes, it would be very good governance by this body to recognize the value of a South End resident on this commu- council. Many of us are in the Federal Way School District, we're in the thirtieth legislative district, our parks in the South, law enforcement, business development, and those interjurisdictional needs are special and unique, and we would benefit from Harry Steinmetz. I told Harry I would actually stand up here only if I could also talk about my friend Louisa Banks. She is a great contributor to this community and this council. The more I get to know her, the more I appreciate her skills, warmth, humanity, humor, and leadership. Louisa Banks would serve well again. And wow, amazing new candidates. Meiling Sproger, don't go away, don't go out that door, and and others, fantastic, okay? Unbelievable. It's a tough choice that you have. I do suggest you have one other metric, and I have a different point of view than what has been expressed tonight than others, and I don't want it to be framed badly. But the voters did just vote, whether it was one vote or a thousand, the voters voted, they gave us a choice, and they made a change. It feels like there are real governance issues that are created based on the recency of that vote when we place that person right on the council with the person that defeated them in the election, no matter who you supported. And with respect to Mr. Harris, I didn't vote for him. So it's not about that. I think it's about good governance. I believe it's a perfect time now for Harry Steinmetz. Thank you for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you. Proteus Morrell? Did they say that right?
It's Proteus.
Proteus, I, oh, there's an A there, my mistake. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Good evening. So my name is Proteus Morrell, and I am a citizen of Federal Way. I'll also state for the record that I also did not watch the meeting where the amendment was voted on for the severance package. I cannot comment on this. So I I am, I will say that I have watched this meeting with great interest, and if anyone has looked back to the back of the room, you will have seen every facial expression go over me over the course of this night, over this very hot night in this very crowded room. Thank you all for being here. And there are many fabulous candidates with lots and lots of great qualities about them, but I have to come here today to advocate for, by my friend and the candidate, Meiling Sproger. And I I will say that I met Meiling Sproger while we went to college together at U of Tacoma, we were in the Global Honors Program together, and we spent two years together studying and crying over our assignments, and I got to know her quite well. She is an intelligent, competent, organized, driven individual, and you would be blessed to have her on your council. She is one of the most involved and community-oriented person, people I have ever met in my life. I sometimes joke that she is the head of fifty different organizations, and that is only a slight exaggeration. On a personal level, she is, in the time I've known her, she is a kind lady, she is not here to cause drama or get in fights with people, she is a go-getter and a team player, and just an overall driven individual. On a more personal note, she loves penguins, she's a dancer, she's the head of a dance troupe, or I think she is currently, or she used to, she was the head of a dance troupe, still a dancer, you don't stop being a dancer, I don't think. And I I am very tempted to say, for those of you who've watched the show Parks and Recreation, she is the real-life Leslie Knope. I I wanted to say that as a point of privilege, but you know, as, you know, why am I advocating her? Well, part of it is that, yes, she is my friend, but trust me, I have a lot of friends who I do not want to see in politics. And on the point of politics, do we agree on every single political position? Position, I I doubt it. I have kind of unorthodox politics as a whole for a lot of different reasons, let's not get into that. But overall, I I want to see her in the arena. In the words of Teddy Roosevelt, I want to see her in the arena, trying to change things and make things better and trying to get things done. And I would be happy to see her on this council in the arena, trying to make things better. Meiling Sproger, remember that name, Meiling Sproger. Meiling Sproger, remember that name. Thank you very much, and good night.
I believe the next names, John and Eleanor, is it Hef or Help? I believe it's John and Eleanor, and it, last name looks like it's spelled A T L P or A T L F.
Mayor, they they left, they were sitting over here.
Okay, all right, thank you. Candace Urquhart.
Candace Urquhart, City of Des Moines. First of all, I'd like to say impressive, you guys are all really impressive, and yeah, wow, only one of you will get it, and I hope you all come back. First of all, I just want to say that how important this is to all of us. And what is really important is fresh ideas and change. And basically, you know, five years ago, whatever, when we came here looking for help with the methadone clinic, going in next to the school, we were met stonewalled, stonewalled with a hand up, and we had to fight, and we had to fight hard for that. And representation in the South End has been tough. I myself called Safeway and told them that this was going to be happening. They had not heard a word. I just think it's important. We feel misrepresented down there, and I'd like some help there, and I'd like some change. The other thing I think is really important, and this goes forward, and I'd love to see council take this on as a policy, is that we don't have conflict of interest sitting on council. on council. And we have opportunities with the port, the port of Seattle, and any conflict of interest sitting up there is frustrating to, um, a citizen. It's scary, it's scary that we're not getting the treatment our city needs, because as many people here have talked with about is our troubles with the port. And again, we were met stonewalled until citizens basically took it on and did it themselves. So, in that regard, I just want to impress, we're looking for South End help, we're looking for someone who knows this city. If I have budget questions, I call Harry. And I just want to say that, um, he is a man of honor, he's, he is a loyal man, he is a practical, uh, a practical thinker. It's about the facts, and that's it. I think he'd be a great asset to, um, to this council. He ran a great race against Tracy, and, um, but those just two passionate people going for the same chair, um, if you ask me, was the problem there. I would have loved to seen both of you up there, because I'm very impressed with how you're, how you're doing. Anyway, I am here to advocate for Harry. I think he's an absolutely impressive man, um, solid, and I'd love to see more representation in the South End. We're only talking Woodmont, there's all Redondo left that, um, really doesn't get, um, you know, it's not where, I'm sorry, but people from the North Hill probably go to, you know, Normandy Park to shop, you know? They're not having to hit that Safeway and feel what it's like. And I know that, I know as a council that you are all looking at us as a whole, but until you walk the walk, it's different. And so, I'm advocating for Harry, I think he'd be an absolute asset.
Thank you. Sandra Mock.
I'm back. Sandra Mock, Des Moines, business owner and resident. We need to fill a position here on city council, and it's an important position. Obviously, because so many people showed up and are willing to stick around till well into the night, it's very important. The fact is this, is everyone wants a better Des Moines, and I think new blood on council is going to help achieve that. When the same people stay on council year after year after year, things tend to stagnate, and the results that people really want aren't always forthcoming. Transparency is what we want. We want to see you all debate in front of us. We want to know if you have any concerns, and when you do these private executive sessions, we don't get to hear that. It's important to us. I also want you to take some time and serious thought about giving this position to Harry Steinmetz. He ran a good campaign, and while I appreciate that his opponent won, and I do appreciate you very much on council, in fact, she's the only one that answered my email when I emailed all of you. She's the only one that answered me. In any case, I think it's very important that you do take some time to really review this. We do have a lot of great candidates, and I'm very impressed by the people that have shown up here with your passion. I think Harry has probably shown up at this city council, other than you folks that have to be here. I think Harry's probably shown up more than anyone, because every time I'm, I've come, I've seen his face here, and I think that he would be an asset to our city council. Thank you.
Diane, and is it Share, Shair? I think it's S-C-H-A-I-R-E-R. Okay, seeing no one approach. The next is, um, and the final voice will be Elizabeth Buren?
Wow, okay.
Did I get that right?
Yes.
Wow, great, thank you.
Hi. Um, thank you all for showing up. It's so, you guys are so unbelievable. So glad that we have this amount of, um, residents that want to volunteer, I mean, you know, serve on the council. I'm neighbors with Harry and Chad, so I'm pulling for them, and I thank Louisa, and I thank the council that's up there right now, for everything you guys do for us, but those guys live under the third runway, and they know what it's like. They live what we live, so, and they, and they're in the South, also the Woodmont neighborhood, so, yeah, that's my choice. Thank you. I know, and I don't envy you.[1654.01][1654.01](laughter)
Okay, well, per our agreement, when we got through the list, we have a hard stop. So, council, you've taken on a lot of information tonight. I want to echo, first of all, I want to say happy birthday. I think the, one, everybody ought to get one day a year where you just, it's your day, and I really appreciate the fact that you came out on that, and thank your family as well. But also, all, to all of you, thank your families. Um, and, and to everybody in the room who came out to take part in this process and listen and have their voice be heard. This is the way I think people need to react. They, they need to talk, they need to, their faces need to be seen, their body language, everything. I will say from my personal perspective, this is probably one of the more impressive groups that, um, I have heard in quite some time, and it's, uh, there's a lot of diversity in, in, in a number of ranges, um, you know, age, gender, um, and everything. So, I am, I'm really, really impressed, and I, I think my colleagues are as well. So, with this, um, council, um, my suggestion is we start at, uh, 6:00 PM next week, because we do have future cities coming in, and we do have some business of the city that must be done. So, um, the agenda will come out with a start time of, of 6:00 PM. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there, I'll second it.
One second.[1762.25][1762.25](applause) Thank you. Thank you.[1765.25][1765.25](applause)
Okay. All those in favor of adjournment, please raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.
Wow.